It is 7:06 PM and this is the planning board. The first item on our agenda tonight is Sixth Station Street, J. Gregory Murphy. It's a joint hearing with the ZBA and for the planning board it is an application for site plan review in association with a special permit A2 and a special permit A3 parking waiver and other such relief as necessary for the construction of a mixed-use commercial residential building at a property known as Sixth Station Street.
And good evening, this is the zoning board of appeals. And likewise, this is an application from J. Gregory Murphy at Sixth Station Street. This has continued from January 30th, 2018, where a special permit A2 under section 3A, 4.22, and 3G to construct a 4,600 square foot commercial residential building, including a 16-space parking garage, first-floor retail space, and four two-bedroom residential units on the second and third floors, as well as a variance from section 4A to construct a commercial residential building resulting in a minimum front yard setback of .4 feet, where 10 feet is required in Business District A and the downtown Hingham overlay district.
Thank you. I want to note for the record that Harbor Media is recording this meeting this evening. And I know that for our board, Gary Tunderf Dick needs to complete a Mullins affidavit.
Yeah, just for the record, I just wanted to say that I reviewed the transcript and I reviewed the documents online again. And I also listened to an audio transcript of the last hearing that I missed, so order, as they say.
And I have the Mullins.
Thank you. The first thing I want to do before we get started is to address the tone and the tenor of our last hearing. I want to start by reminding everyone here that these boards are made up of volunteers, volunteers who commit many, many hours to this town and work really hard. And our staff also works very hard to support us and to prepare for these hearings. And I just want to state that we will be treated with the respect that we deserve. So at tonight's hearing, as always, no one will be speaking unless recognized by one of the chairs, Robin or myself. And if there are outbursts, you may be asked to leave the hearing. I also wish to call out an email that we received from the applicant making disparaging remarks about a peer review engineer. I think it goes without saying that this is unproductive. I also want to call out an email from the applicant and from some of their supporters accusing the planning board of not appropriately listening to abutters. And I just want to tell everyone that everyone on this board really and truly appreciates the time that citizens take to weigh in on these issues. We read and take into account every email, every letter, and in-person comment that we receive. And it is our role, our duty in fact, to take these comments into consideration during our evaluations. And we do. And we do this even when, as happens about 75% of the time, no abutters show up to weigh in or send in comments on matters. We put ourselves in the shoes of abutters and that is part of our process when evaluating applications and applying the zoning bylaw. So it goes without saying that this accusation is also unproductive. Moving on to housekeeping items, both boards have other agenda items after this hearing, so we're going to have a hard stop at 8:15 tonight for this hearing. So therefore, I encourage my fellow board members to keep the time in mind as we work to identify outstanding questions efficiently and identify what additional information, if any, is required at this point. I want to note that the planning board has received new plans dated February 9th that depict new information, including utility-related details. We have not yet had this revised plan reviewed by our peer review engineer for adequacy because the peer review account is expended. So we have an, I know we have an estimate from the peer review engineer for the cost to review this revised plan and then also to attend the next meeting, which we will provide to the applicant if we haven't already. And we cannot authorize this work until we receive the funds. Yes, Mary?
I did, Madam Chair, receive the money right at the beginning of the hearing tonight, so...
Great, so we can move forward with that, next step of that review. Thank you, Mary. I also just want to state that which has already been stated, which is that the planning board clearly identified concerns, I think unanimously, about the height, style, and massing of the proposed structure at the last hearing and before that. And we understand that the Historic Districts Commission will be hearing this matter at their meeting on March 1st, and they will be reviewing the design of the structure. So it will be most efficient to focus our questions tonight, mostly on the parking, the scope of the waivers being requested, and things of that nature, instead of that which the Historic Districts Commission will be addressing hopefully at their March 1st meeting. I also want to say we will take public comment at the end of the hearing, as time allows. And as I stated before, we have received a great deal of written public comments on this project. All public comments received to date are in the file, which has been provided to the applicant, and they're also available for review on the planning board's section of the town website under "Applications Pending." There are also emails to the board as they come in, and as I stated before, we read and consider each and every one. So thank you for your involvement. Please continue to stay involved in this process.
And just on behalf of the zoning board, I want to just join in what Jen has just mentioned and echo her comments. On behalf of this board, we're also volunteers. It is our charge to apply the standards based not only in the zoning bylaw but also state law. And so to the extent that there have been continued hearings and additional questions that have come forward as these proceedings have continued, we want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we possibly can and that the decision that we ultimately issue is supported by the law.
Okay, at this point, I think it would make sense to have the applicant present any, if there is new material, in addition to that we know there are new plans, but any other new material since the last meeting. I think there's a change in the parking on North Street, there's a new trench-drain sewer connection that we should talk about. So if you'd like to make your presentation, please.
I would. My name is Jerry Seeland, I'm the architect for the project, excuse me. And I felt like we spent quite a bit of time at our last hearing talking about many of the technical details. There have been some minor changes since that hearing, which we can go over in the fullness of time here tonight. But it seemed as though we perhaps missed an opportunity to bring the planning board and the zoning board, to a certain extent, a little bit more up to speed with our project progress, insofar as you had expressed concerns about things like height and massing and style and all that stuff. Excuse me, we felt it would be a good thing to just kind of bring you along to the same place that we think we brought, for example, the Historic Districts Commission, and essentially perhaps take a little bit of a step back from some of the technical stuff, go over more the overall project, and then get back to some of the technical issues toward the end of my presentation. So if that's okay with you, I think you'll find it enlightening and helpful.
Great.
Brief project description, again, to kind of reinforce what Jennifer just said. This is a three-story building with a basement. It has about 4,800 square feet of retail or commercial space on the ground floor, eight residential units, 16 enclosed basement parking spaces, all on the site. We're in the Business District A, zoning district, in the downtown overlay district. There's been an awful lot of talk about how this is a unique part of town, and of course every square inch of anything is unique. But I would like to note that it is in the Business A district and it's also in the downtown overlay district. Downtown overlay district was created within most people's living memory. This was explicitly included in it, and when it was created, there were no special standards specified to be applied to this end of the overlay district. In fact, we think that this project is really pretty much a poster child for what the objectives of the overlay district were. It's a mixed-use project. It includes ground-floor commercial, which helps the vitality of Hingham Square. It includes upper-floor residential, which, up until the Lincoln Building's approval, I think the town has been really, really trying to achieve to make it a more livable mini downtown. We provide onsite parking, which is explicitly stated in the objectives of the overlay district, and we're building a contemporary building in terms of all building codes, handicap codes, and the like. So if you look at the objectives of the downtown overlay district, this is really batting a thousand. Gold medal performance in light of current Olympic TV. It's kind of interesting to me, and this is a bit of an aside, that one of the most prevalent non-conforming elements in the district are in fact the single-family homes. And it's not to say that they shouldn't be there, we all love them, they're nice, it's fun to live downtown, but interestingly enough, within the Business A district, they're not a permitted use. So they're currently pre-existing non-conforming, but you know, it's kind of interesting and it's worth noting. This is, the town meeting has said this is a business district and it's in the downtown overlay district. Our goals for tonight, if possible, would be to get a vote on site plan review and a vote on the parking and other related waivers. We think you could do that, you may choose not to, but we would like to do that, it would be really helpful to the team. We've been working on this project for quite a long time now, and we have yet to get any decisions, one way or the other. And we feel like we have given enough information based on the board's past practice with doing site plan review and parking waivers that you can in fact do that tonight, admittedly with conditions. I'd like to do a little approvals history, just again, so that everybody understands that this team has been diligently pursuing this project on multiple parallel paths. We had our, we kind of came up with the idea for this in December, November, December of 2016. And in January of 2017, we had an informal meeting with the planning board, and I think at that board meeting, we presented some very preliminary plans and elevations. And you're right, you know, at that time, you said we're concerned about the height and the bulk of the building. We had an informal meeting with the town staff, I think that's the standard Monday meeting, in March of 2017. We fielded a lot of questions from the various town staff people and we took them all into consideration. We started our zoning board of appeals variance hearing first, of all the various required hearings, because at the time, we felt that was a threshold issue, we are applying for a variance, and we felt that it was critical to get that past us before we proceeded with other time-consuming and complicated approvals processes. And you know, it was a choice we made and that's what we did. We started that, I believe, in July. We've had three hearings with the ZBA to date, just on the question of the variance and not including this hearing. We started our hearings with the Historic Districts Commission in February, we had a kind of informal information presentation to them in February, and then since that time, we've had two formal hearings with Historic Districts Commission. We started, as you guys know, the planning board-ZBA joint hearing for site plan review, parking waiver, and special permit in December, and we've now had two hearings to date. We've had various other meetings with Aquarium, we've kind of worked out what the water conditions are likely to be, we've met with the Light Plant, we've had very lengthy meetings with them to work out all the details around the little easement for the transformers that's at the corner of the site, and we have that under control. We've met with the DPW, we've met with the town engineers. So we've, in addition to all of our informal and formal hearings before boards, we've met with most, though probably not all, of the relevant town staff. The current status of all of these hearings is as follows, I believe. We've received comment letters from the police department, from the fire department, from the building department, from the Board of Health, from Town Council Susan Murphy. We've received the traffic peer review reports, we've received the civil engineer peer review reports, and we've received detailed comment letters from Mary as well. We think we've worked diligently to address all of the technical concerns expressed in these letters, and we believe there are no substantial outstanding or unresolved issues within all of these, particularly the peer review letters. According to the last set of correspondence we've seen, pretty much everything has been resolved to the peer review engineer's satisfaction. We think that clearly there are other boards that are going to have to weigh in outside of this board. We have to go before the Board of Selectmen still for several issues related to both some of the parking spaces we discussed last time and also to tie into the town storm drainage system. We found out late this afternoon that the sewer department wants to look at something else, and we suspect that is related to a plumbing feature that relates to the garage floor drain. But I would say on that note, at the end of the day, we're required to meet all applicable building and plumbing codes. That particular issue of the garage floor drain and required oil/gas separator, that's kind of a plumbing code issue. So we think that we'll be able to successfully address any issues that arise in further staff or peer review and in any subsequent hearings, we trust. And we do think that the planning board tonight can easily condition site plan review and I think parking waiver accordingly. So having said that, we spent so much time last time talking about what does this building look like? Is it too tall, is it not tall enough? Is it too big, is it too small? What's the style, does that fit? And we chose very explicitly originally not to address that with the board because according to our bylaw under 3G5, any project that's in the overlay district and in the historic district has design review by Historic Districts Commission. Having said that, I think Mary pointed out, everybody has a right to have an opinion and the board does have some jurisdiction over certain things that relate to that. We trust in the end that the boards will defer to the Historic Districts Commission, but so as to alleviate any concern that you might have that somehow we ignored your original concerns or that we haven't been trying to work really hard with Historic Districts to improve the design, we brought a few things to show you. So Tom, yes, let's do that one first. When we began this project, and the project has had, no, we don't want to turn that one over just yet. The project has had multiple beginnings, so it's a little hard to kind of nail down exactly, you know, which plans appear to first. But basically, the, I can't get my thing to work here. This building on the left was the original, that was the original concept that we had, that we developed this back in December of 2016. And the building, at the time, we were thinking of it as something akin to the Lincoln Building. We felt that was getting good exposure in town and people were liking it. So this was basically a three-story building with a totally flat roof. We had a little peaked roof here to kind of emphasize one of the entrances. Interestingly enough, in the very first Historic Districts Commission meeting that we went to, one of the members who's no longer on the commission, but a wonderful guy and had been on the commission for years, said, "I want to see more of those little guys, I want to see more peaks, I want to see it all around the building." So you know, at the outset, while there was a concern about mass and height and relationship to adjacent buildings, the focus was a little bit more on details which, in the end, would have made the building taller. Having said that, when we went in, Tom, can you read that, those numbers right there? When we went in...
Yes, it's 42 feet 9 inches and then 39 feet.
Yeah, so the original top of the flat roof was around 39 feet, and then we furthermore were assuming we'd have equipment on the roof, elevator penthouses, plus the little peaks. So we were at around 39 feet for the main mass, plus another few feet for various other roof structures. We felt that it was an appropriate height based on the uses because we had a reasonably tall floor-to-floor for the first floor for the commercial space, which we kind of talked about briefly last time, and we had somewhat conventional nine-foot-plus-or-minus ceiling heights anticipated for the residential floors. But you know, we heard what people were saying, and people said, "We're really uncomfortable with the height. What are we going to do?" So the first thing, the first thing we did was we started to lower the building, keeping it a flat roof sort of expression, and we got it down to what our current height is, which is around 39, I'm sorry, 34 foot 10 inches, give or take. And incidentally, all of these dimensions that I'm giving you are measured from the first floor level to the highest visual. As you know, the site has some topography to it. North Street is mostly flat, but there's a little bit of pitch to it, and as you go around the corner, as we all know, it drops down. But you know, this is the side that most people have focused on, Historic Districts has focused on this the most because that is kind of in the heart of the district. So we started by simply lowering the building. But there are a couple of ways to change height, or to change apparent height. One is of course to cut feet out, which we did, and we think frankly, we think we cut a little too much out, but at this point, that's neither here nor there. The other way of doing it is to essentially convert some wall to roof. So what we did, this is our new scheme as currently out there before Historic Districts. And the new scheme, and I've brought the nice colored rendering, so we'll look at those in a sec. But the new scheme basically introduces an eve line here, excuse my shaky hands, and then a mansard roof with dormers. And it really, when you see the flat roof compared to the mansard roof side-by-side, which I'll show you in a sec, it really does make a huge difference. It comes at some cost, it's more expensive to build, it uses up space on the top floor, so you know, for more money, they're basically getting less saleable space. But it was pretty clear to us as we prepared to go to the last Historic Districts Commission meeting, that Scheme A wasn't going to fly, even no matter how much we cut the roof down. So we came up with this. Excuse me, we think that it has improved the building a lot. And Tom, if you take this guy off and let's just show how it looks along North Street. So, and again, this is a two-dimensional rendering, it's not colored, it's a little hard to see the three-dimensionality of the roof. But basically, the concern has been that we're longer than these buildings and we're taller. Well, the fact of the matter is, we're about nine feet taller than the building right next door. Doesn't seem like an awful lot to me, you know, I can almost reach it going like this. When you get down to, I think that's number 40, right? We're getting close, we're getting close to the same height as number 40. When you get to 38, we're essentially the same height as the peak of that roof. To me, and we'll go into this in a little more detail in a sec, but to me, that's what Hingham Square is. Hingham Square has a lot of variety to it. It has big buildings, small buildings, long buildings, short buildings. But in any case, that shows you in elevation what these relative heights are. Tom, if you would take that down and let's show the next one. Thank you, Nick. This shows the building in relation to other buildings in the square. So here's our proposed building, here's the Lincoln Building. And just FYI, it's hard for you to understand this looking at the elevation, but this section right here is actually, you barely perceive that from the street, that's set back 20 feet, because that represents where the building has to go back to avoid the electrical easement. And in fact, when you look at the kind of straight portion of the building along North Street, it's almost identical to the Lincoln Building. At this point, we're about a foot taller than the Lincoln Building, and you know, for all practical purposes, a very similar look along the street. Now take a look, interestingly enough, the Lincoln Building, which is a brand-new building, this is not a restoration, it's brand-new. They tore a building down, I love what they've done, but it's a brand-new building. Look at the relationship between the Lincoln Building and the building next door. If you go around the corner, it's even more so when you compare the Lincoln Building to the Petite Maison building. Far, far greater height difference between this building and that building, and even that building, than we are compared to number 44 North Street, the red building next door. Likewise, you go to the end of the block, I always call that the Zona Building there, that's quite a bit taller than our building. Is it a problem? I don't know. I have lived in town for many years, I work right across the street, I look across the street, I don't feel like we should tear down the Zona Building because it's taller than that building. Likewise, just another comparison here, this is 55 Main Street, one of the Hingham Institution buildings. Again, we're about the same size. So Tom, if you would take that down and then turn that guy around, we'll kind of see the three-dimensional issues that we've been talking about. So you can turn that one around. There you go. So when we kind of first got into doing our renderings, which was sometime toward the beginning of the Historic Districts process, this was the building. Again, you know, pretty much a straight front, flat-roof building, and as you can see, that's the mass of the building. As you go around the corner, there's quite a bit of stepping. And that, right there, is the corner that I was talking about where the remainder of the building is set back 20 feet. So you know, depending on what perspective you take, there's really quite a bit of space between us and the red building. But this gives you a pretty good idea of the difference, and again, we heard what the Historic Districts Commission said. They said it's too tall, it's too massive, there's something off. So we came in with this. This is again, where we stand right now, the basic footprint is the same, we have the, what we're calling kind of the bay window over here, but all of the roof that is along the main portion of North Street and all the way around the back is now a mansard. And what's nice about it is, it fits in much better with the character of all the other buildings on the street. And in fact, across the street, there's a small house that has a mansard roof as well. As we'll see in a minute, mansard roofs aren't that unusual in Hingham, and in fact, they were quite prevalent in the 19th century. But we felt like this was a great improvement. Historic Districts Commission likewise felt that it was a great improvement too. And while, as Mary said last night, or at our last hearing, Historic Districts did not vote to approve this building. However, toward the end of our hearing, we were at the point where we hadn't begun this process, and we asked the commission if, excuse me, if they, if we could have a sense of their feelings about the building, just in terms of the basic height and mass, so that we could make a decision to go forward with this process, which involved a tremendous amount of work. They went around the room and they all said that they were happy with what was there, they were, I don't want to put words in their mouth, I won't say they were happy, they were smiling. They said they were fine with it, and they said they were ready to go on and look at other things like materials, details, and colors. That was in October, I think October 12th. So we left that meeting armed with this elevation and with what we thought was a firm handshake from the Historic Districts Commission, that allowed us, or that allowed these guys here, to make the commitment to have Tom and I do a tremendous amount of work to get through this process. Now again, I kind of think that that's a very nice building. I think it's very, very similar to many buildings in the square, just in terms of its overall composition. We don't have an awful lot of flat buildings in the square, so this is more complimentary to them. And I think by bringing an eve line down like this and creating what appears to be a roof, yeah, we're taller than that building, so what? We're not, we're really no taller than the building two doors down, and that has a peaked roof. A couple of days ago, a friend tumbled upon, or stumbled upon, an old calendar from the Hingham Historical Society, and she said, "You might get a kick out of this." So Tom, if you could take that down. Apparently, on the corner where the post office now stands, for about 100, whoopsie, I'm sorry, let's go to the very back and just pull that out and put it in front. Yeah, there you go. So right on the corner where the post office now stands, from about the mid-19th century until 1949, stood the Cushing House, which was a hotel. You know, it's almost like I wish that I could say that the pieces of this were in one of Peter Bickford's barn and we were just going to put it up over there. But it isn't, it was torn down. But isn't it fascinating that this portion of Hingham Square, which is about two blocks away from where we are, had a building that in many respects is almost the identical aesthetic, very similar height and mass, and frankly, filled the entire block? That apparently was quite an involved stable complex. When we go back before Historic Districts, we're going to try to get some more information on everything happening at this end of town because, according to another map that's right out in the hallway here, you can see what I think was probably the original St. Paul School, which was at least another story higher than this, also with the mansard roof with dormers. So historically, this form, that size, that mass, was everywhere in Hingham Square. I feel like, you know, frankly, I wish I could take credit for this, but it's a total accident that we ended up with this and the two blocks away until 1949, we had that. So just to remind us all of what Hingham Square is, Tom, let's take both of those down, and let's just, maybe Greg, if you don't mind, just go up and help Tom do pictures or Dan, and you can take that rendering down too. So what we did was, we just, I just went around the square and I took pictures of big buildings and small buildings. On the left, certainly one of the dominant buildings in Hingham Square is the headquarters of the Historical Society. On the right, this is a little piece of North Street. You know, I've got a couple of buildings here, I've got a little tiny building here. Okay, let's take those down, let's see the next. St. Paul's dominating, you know, that was even taller than the Cushing House, probably taller than the school as well. Here again is North Street, where the Lincoln Building is going to go right where Greg is standing. That's the Zona Building, quite a bit taller than all of our buildings, and these little guys here, that one, they're shorter than 44 North Street. Is that a problem? I don't think it's a problem in Hingham Square. Let's do the next one. This is right across from Root Awakenings, that's Winston Flowers, and I'm sorry, that's Winston, that's the other little florist there. Once again, you know, very similar sort of relationship, that's probably about 10 feet taller than that, quite a bit larger in plan than that is. And likewise, here's the old station with the Square Cafe here and the Zona Building here. You know... You know, this actually doesn't look quite as different because you have that little section of peaked roof. But when you go around to La Petite Maison, I think that's about fourteen feet tall compared to the Lincoln Building, which again is around thirty-four feet tall. So, you have a twenty-foot height difference there. Okay? Let's see what's next. Here we have the Loring, which is, you know, probably one of everyone's favorite buildings, right next to a rather short building for the bank. And then, of course, that's a view going up Main Street, and you can see quite a height difference within the Pride Building here at steps to, and here goes to the building that I'll always call the Carol Anne Building. We get to Hingham Institution. It's all over the place. Should any of these buildings be torn down because they're taller or shorter than the other one? I don't think so. Finally, again, this is a much better view of the comparison of Hingham Institution to the Carol Anne Building or the Hingham Jewelers Building, not Hingham Jewelers, sorry, Whitney Gardens. It's part of the square. It is the character of the square. I know that you guys are not going to weigh in on this, and this is the argument or the presentation that we'll have with Historic Districts. But I just felt like it was important because we spent so much time saying, "Big, big, 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 big." And I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with big. I don't think our building is particularly big, and it certainly is not out of character in terms of its relationship to its neighbors with other buildings in the square. So, that's kind of my pitch on appearance. The last thing I'd like to close with is a discussion of precedence. When I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Historic Districts Commission, precedent was important to us, as I'm sure it is important to you. We all rely on precedent, the boards do, because that helps them to be fair and to render kind of uniform judgments. And it's fair to applicants who come into processes trying to understand what will ultimately be approved. There were two significant precedents on which we relied when we were starting to envision this project, significant for different reasons. One was the Beer Garden, which the Planning Board approved, yeah, close to ten years ago now. I think, Sarah, you might be the only one still on the board who was present then. Gary, I'm not sure if you were. That's an important precedent, primarily because it's the same site. The other precedent, we think, is still the Lincoln Building. And I think in many ways, it's important, it's more important in different ways because it's a very similar project, similar in size and similar in function. And it was approved a year ago. So, what are some of the, when we started our project, we said, "We want to compare favorably to those presidential projects. We don't want to come in and be worse than they are. We want to come in equal to or better than, A, because it's the right thing to do if you can, and B, because it would make it, you know, more predictable that we'd get favorable hearing from the various review boards." So, let's talk about the Beer Garden first. The Beer Garden is on the same site. The site had been expanded. The town had sold adjacent property to the owners at that time, and so it's the same size. It's a hundred-and-eighty-five-seat bar and restaurant. Forty-six parking spaces required. They had eleven onsite parking spaces. Thirty-five parking spaces were waived. We're asking for eighteen spaces to be waived as part of our special permit process. The rationale for the waiver of the parking spaces, pretty much the same as what we have, which was the proximity to Station Street and the abundance of occupiable spaces in Station Street. But again...
Jerry, I don't want to interject and ruin the flow of your presentation, but we really want to get to the new information that you have to present tonight, just because of the limit of time that we've put on tonight, so...
I will. Our new information is extremely modest.
Okay.
So, just bear with me. I'll get through this as fast as I can.
Okay. As long as you're getting to it eventually. I just don't want to lose that opportunity completely.
You've got a half hour. It should take five minutes for Tom to present whatever new information there is.
Okay.
So, anyway, back to the Beer Garden. Forty-six spaces required, eleven onsite, thirty-five waived. We have a total of sixteen plus eighteen required, which is thirty-four, of which we're providing sixteen onsite, not in a surface lot. Beer Garden was in a surface lot. All enclosed, not visible to human eye, and we're asking for eighteen spaces to be provided in Station Street. Site distance and visibility. We think we compare favorably with what the Beer Garden had. The Beer Garden had a wall that was in excess of six feet, I think in some cases eight feet, all along the property line, along the curve of Station Street. Their access to their parking lot was in substantially the same place as ours is. There's nothing in the decision that addresses site distances. It was a much less sophisticated analysis. At the end of the day, it was approved, but I maintain, and I think Tom can back me up, that our site distances, as have now been okayed by Jeff Dirk, are better than what the Beer Garden was. Their view of Station Street to the east was blocked just as much as ours is by the two parking spaces there. And frankly, the building at forty-four has exactly the same situation. So, while it's always nice to be perfect, the building at forty-four has been living with that sort of encumbrance on its sightlines for many years, and the Beer Garden had the same thing. There was no mention of that in the report. The parking lot entrance, again, almost identical to ours, was in the same relationship as the parking spaces for the retail strip across the street. There was no mention of any conflict with that, and I think it's safe to say that the kind of activity you would have seen coming from a bar's parking lot all day and into the night far exceeds the activity that we will have from ours. There was no mention of that in the decision, and again, I think we're under control, but we believe that we're having less of an impact on the neighbors' parking use than they did. I noticed in the decision, there were no letters, review letters of concern received from the Fire Department or the Police Department. There were no review comments quoted in the decision from other town agencies, whether the Building Department, the Board of Health, Sewer Department, DPW, or whatever. The one comment that was made about the sewer was that somebody, perhaps it was a review engineer, said, "Oh, it's a restaurant. There's going to be a grease trap." Well, yeah, there will be, and the sewer flows from a restaurant of a hundred-and-eighty-five seats will be dramatically more than any sewer flow coming out of our building, as will any potential effluent of grease compared to the occasional modest nothing that's going to come out of a garage floor drain. Again, not only was there no condition on that, the only statement in the decision was that the plans for the sewer connection, including grease trap, would have to be approved by the Sewer Department prior to construction. And it would be the same with us. It was not listed as a condition. It was listed as a fact because you couldn't get a building permit without having the Sewer Department approve the grease trap associated with that massive sewer system. The decision also recognized the Historic District Commission's authority for design review. Interestingly enough, there were no Historic District Commission hearings referenced at the time of the approval, and I'm not sure if they even started the process. So, again, in terms of trying to be diligent, trying to get everybody up to the same speed, we feel like we have been going on parallel paths and are quite far along in our Historic Districts Commission process. There were no significant conditions to the site plan review, to the restaurant special permit, or to the parking waiver. It was a pretty straightforward approval. I don't have a problem with it. It just was interesting to me that on a project with potentially a significantly greater impact on traffic, parking, and safety, very little attention compared to what we've got. The Lincoln Building, let's talk about that a bit. Three-story building, commercial residential. It's got about twenty-five hundred square feet on the first floor, so that, you know, around half of ours. It has eight residential units. Now, they're all one-bedroom, for sure, but eight residential units by law only requires a single parking space per unit because they're one-bedroom units. I like the Lincoln Building. I think it's terrific. I hope it gets started again. It's been on hold for way too long. But again, I'd just like to look at how that was reviewed compared to the level of scrutiny we have. There's no onsite parking provided at the Lincoln Building. It's a brand-new building. There was no waiver. All there was, I think, was a parking determination. The parking spaces approved were admittedly substandard because they're too short. They're approved for nighttime parking only, I think. I don't know where people are going to park on the weekends, but, you know, it's clearly, we compare very favorably with that for the residential use. All of our parking is onsite. It's all there. There was no onsite loading provided, nothing. And there's no condition for any sort of reserved loading on the street, nor should there be because frankly, in front of the Lincoln Building, if you're lucky, you can park four or five cars on the street. There were no waivers for the commercial parking, and I suspect that they would have had probably about half as much commercial parking required as ours. There were no waivers specified at all. And there were no waivers for any of the other things in five A five that we are applying for waivers on. So, we're recognizing, thanks in part to Mary's pointing it out to us, that there are yet more things in the parking count. We're recognizing that the board should provide waivers where it's necessary. It's curious that Lincoln Building didn't have to do it. You probably would have done it because you had to, because there was no option, but it wasn't done. Roof drainage is another thing. We're improving the drainage from the site substantially. All the drainage right now is sheeting off the site. It's kind of junky. It's onsite parking. There's potential contaminants there. We're improving our drainage substantially, both because of the fact that our drainage is now roof drainage, which is cleaner, and we're doing water quality treatment. And we're having to go to the Board of Selectmen for permission to do this. Lincoln Building didn't have to do that. Lincoln Building, all it says in there is, "Lincoln Building will tie into town storm water." Okay, great. I'm glad. I'm not sure why they didn't have to get the Board of Selectmen's approval for that. Their project is not only a zero-lot line project, but it's specifically noted in the approval that the cornices for the building project over private property. It's a condition of the approval that they provide proof that they're allowed to do that, but it's an important feature of the design. I'm not quite sure if they have it yet. We're not asking for any permission to extend over anybody else's property. Our building is all on our property. We're not zero-lot line, although we are, in fact, applying for a variance. Finally, the Lincoln Building project requires that access to the apartments go over private, somebody else's private property, in this case, the MBTA. My understanding is that, part of the holdup for now is that they haven't gotten that resolved with the T. Both of those items were included in the Planning Board's approval of the project as conditions, as they should have been, but they were serious threshold conditions. I don't think we have anything that approaches those in terms of having a potential impact on the future of our project. The Lincoln Building decision, again, recognizes the historic, Hingham Historical Commission's design review authority and appreciated it, and in fact stated that the building was going to complement the town, fill a messy gap, and the Planning Board was looking forward to seeing it built. There were no review comments quoted in the decision from any other town agencies, Building Department, Board of Health, Sewer, DPW, et cetera. Most of the conditions of approval for the Lincoln Building related to construction-phase activities, how they're going to block sidewalks, how will they get construction materials in, where do the workers park? And I think we would expect that those conditions would be applied probably to the mixed-use special permit. But again, we look at that. It's a very similar project. We feel like we compare favorably in so many ways with it, and we think that, at least according to the decision, it feels like we're being held to a very severe standard. So, now I'll conclude, and then I'll let Tom talk about the garage floor drain. We think we've met or exceeded all criteria for site plan review, parking, and other related waivers. We think that those, that the votes or decisions can be granted with conditions, including the Sewer Department's review of any sewer connections. We think we do compare favorably with the other similar projects that we've discussed that the Planning Board and the Zoning Board have both approved. We obviously commit to continuing to work with the ZBA, with Historic Districts Commission. We'll pursue, we have already initiated the request for permission from the Board of Selectmen for adding a parking space in front, just one, because we, everyone agreed the two was too much. And we've also asked for the removal of those two parking spaces in the back, though if they're not removed, we certainly would agree to the right turn only. You know, a lot of discussion last time about human nature and who's going to obey a right turn only if they don't have to. You know, to some degree, I would say the same thing about parking spots that are four-hundred feet away from your apartment. If there's a parking spot on the street, you're likely to park there rather than parking four-hundred feet away. We'll pursue any required approvals from the Board of Health. That was another letter that came up. We have no doubt that we will secure that. And we also will agree to any reasonable conditions of the reviews and approval. We'd love to have your vote tonight on either the site plan review or the various waivers, or preferably both, so that we can move forward with confidence on the other required approvals. And that's it. So, now, Tom, do you want to just talk briefly about whatever has changed?
Just hold on one second. I just want to announce, I just want to state for the record that despite me saying we have a hard eight-fifteen deadline and suggesting that we leave the discussion of the height and massing of the building to the HTC so that we could get to the new material and board questions and comments and public comment, it's now seven-fifty-one, and we're moving to the new material.
Thank you.
Do you want me to put your pen? You can, please. I'm Tom Pizurski from Merrill Engineers, and I'm the senior project manager on the project. I'll be as brief as I can. Site plan, layouts...
We don't want you to be brief. This is what we want to elaborate on and discuss.
Okay. All right. Site plan updates. Layout sheet. We eliminated one space on North Street, and we added snow removal notes that were requested by the peer review consultant on the board. So, we're ensuring that there are no site distance problems and snow removal is properly taken care of, and if it needs to be removed, it can be moved off-site. On the grading utility sheet, we added the garage floor drain, which is shown on that plan in the middle. We have an MWRA oil-water separator added to the plant outside of the building, which is required, and we've tied that into a sawman hole. We provided the supporting details on the detail sheets for the MWRA oil-water separator, the sawman hole, and a sawpipe connection detail to ensure that we have a watertight connection. As far as the Building Commissioner's letter, you have a response letter that was provided to the boards, and we got a response back from the Building Commissioner today. He is satisfied that we have responded to all his comments, and he has one caveat, is section 521, if the power goes out in the elevator, we'd not be in compliance. And that is easily addressed and can be addressed with him as we go through the opening process, either by having a generator power. While the fact of the matter is that somebody who needs accessible handicap access into the elevator, if the power's out in their car, quite honestly, they're not going to stay in the garage. They're going to drive away and go elsewhere. That's the reality, unfortunately, of what happens. Director of Community Planning responses. We've addressed the Building Commissioner's comments. Access agreement. Our client is fully in support of pursuing an access agreement for the abutter next door. We do agree that the HTC is the design authority, and this can easily be a condition of approval. And we are going to pursue discussing things with the HTC, such as height, mass, and site, construction phasing. Jerry, if you could flip that over, please? We did submit a formal submittal to the Board of Selectmen, and we tried to capture every comment that we've had and incorporate those areas that require attention from the Board of Selectmen. And on that sheet there, you'll find that we have the parking plan. If you could just rotate that up ninety degrees so they can read it a little better. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. All right. So, on the top part, we have the parking plan, what our parking plan is, and a couple of key points there is we eliminated the space closest to North Street. There were quiet site distance based on a thirty mile-per-hour speed, and what we had out there was twenty-five, but thirty is two-hundred feet, and we have two-hundred-and-fifty-nine feet of site distance at that particular point. So, that meets the Ashbro federal requirement for site distances, exceeds it by getting rid of that space. And quite honestly, we exceeded it when we had the space there, but we eliminated it. The other thing of interesting point is eliminating the two spaces down, and it's on the top part, Jerry, there, right in the middle. Those two spaces directly adjacent to our driveway, I think they should be eliminated, and we've applied to the Board of Selectmen to do so. And the reason I think we should is those two spaces present a traffic site distance problem, not only for our project, for Station Street traffic heading west, but also for forty-four North Street, for Station Street traffic heading east. So, the problem is, it's a dual problem, so we hope the Board of Selectmen will consider supporting that. And then, if you've looked at the traffic analysis that was done not only by our engineer, but the town's engineer, Station Street has... but the town's engineer, Station Street has an abundance of extra spaces right across the street from the site. Somewhere in the vicinity, depends on the time of day and the season that you look at, of 51 to 96 available spaces. So, we're only going to have a net loss of one if they approve the space up front. The other thing we've incorporated into this is construction phasing. There's two components to that construction phasing plan. The first is the excavation foundations and framing work, and that takes some area where realistically, we're going to have to have that fence moved out into the town layout, requires Board of Selectmen approval. But of paramount importance in that thing, in the presentation on both of those, is to ensure that we have safe pedestrian traffic throughout the site, and we have accounted for that in both of those. The bottom one, that takes care of exterior work and interior work. So, at that point, when we have the interior work, we can pull those fences in on our property line. We will probably, we're going to present to the Selectmen, we're going to leave the fence out on the sidewalk area where it's not constructed, because we have to build that sidewalk. So, when everything's said and done, you're going to have at least a six-foot-wide brick sidewalk with granite curb in around the entire site that's ADA accessible. Staging area, that is also addressed. You can see on the top drawing in the middle, we have a staging area for materials, and also for construction work or parking. Police details, we fully agree with that. We have no problem with having police details as needed on the site. Construction schedule is identified on that plan there. We're essentially looking probably four to six months for the first phase, and then generally, a good eight to nine months for the remaining phases, give or take a month or two, to wrap things up and take it care of. The 21E, I have been in this business a long time, and I can tell you this, that our client has been, not even the property owner, is the potential buyer for the property, extremely proactive in trying to address the 21E issue, find out what's going on. They had handed to them a 21E study and information that was completed on behalf of former owners, with information from '90 to '95, but they still had Jeff Mosshold to go through and complete his complete analysis and records checked. The difficult thing, and I know some people may want to see this, is, we don't have the power to make DEP say, "Give us a finding," if they feel the finding may or may not be warranted. But that doesn't mean our client is not intending to work with their neighbors. They want to be good neighbors, and they're trying to work with the neighbors. They've been talking to their attorney over it. And we've also committed to have a licensed site professional, who is also a professional engineer onsite during the entire excavation-construction process, to test the material, make sure it's acceptable, and then if there are issues with it, it will be properly remediated and disposed of offsite. Photometric plan, we have very few lights. The lights are going to be in the cove areas up front, downward shining. And the ones out back, we will make sure that they are dark-sky compliant. We will be willing and happy to provide a photometric plan that ensures that they are. But that area, around that whole area, is already very well lit. Then, the last comment, which I already addressed, was LSP monitoring and testing. We will do that. We fully agree to that. The Town Council, she had some comments and wanted to make sure that the, what discharges into the stormwater system, that will be the trench drain for the driveway, and that'll be the treated stormwater that goes, comes from the infiltration roof to the overflow. And on top of that, the catch space, and we're taking that unit out, we're putting a very expensive stormwater treatment unit down there to ensure the runoff that presently is not treated from that entire watershed receives treatment and is maintained properly. And we also have on record a long-term pollution prevention plan that covers the maintenance of these facilities, to include the newly-added MWR-A oil-water separator. And she was asking for clarification on Sheet C 7.6, as it relates to the drainage tie-in. That sheet is not intended for that. That's an overall watershed sheet that we had to analyze the system. What we really want to use is Sheet C 5.1. That shows the drainage tie-in. We did add the floor drain and MWR-A separated to the plans, and we've already talked, she had 21E comments. She said she was going to look at it, or have somebody look at it. I mean, it's open records. If anybody has any suggestions or findings, we'll listen to what they have to say. I think one of the most important things that we should probably talk about this evening are waivers. You have a waiver request in here. It covers Section VA 2, off-street parking, to grant the waiver for off-street, waiver for 18 commercial spaces. Section VA 3, loading spaces, to allow a 10-foot-wide loading area as opposed to 12-foot. Our justification for that particular request is to just leave a little aisle for passenger residents to get in and out, which, by the way, it's 20 to 24 vehicles a day that are coming out of that residence. That's only residence traffic using it. It's very low. Then, we have the design standards, Section 5A5, safe and vehicle, safe and convenient vehicle and pedestrian access. I think that one particular section there, we have an occasional SU truck that's going to make a minor movement, to make a turning movement on Station Street. But once it gets in the space, it's not going to block the new six-foot-wide ADA-compliant sidewalk. It's not going to block traffic anywhere on the street. It's not going to inhibit residents from coming in and out. The next one is the drive location, to minimize design conflicts and site distance issues. That, I think, pertains most importantly to eliminating those two spaces directly east of our drive. If that can be taken care of and approved, I think everybody would be happy with that. If they can't, we are certainly in agreement with the recommendations that were prescribed by VAI engineers in their most recent report. Provide ample loading area separate from parking and instructions. Our loading area is not part of the parking lot, but it is in the same drive that they share, so I thought it was important, maybe we should perhaps include that in there. The truck will back up. The tires can still get in and out, but it doesn't pull down in any way, shape, or form to where the residents park. So, that's up for the board to decide what they would like to do with that issue.
Can you explain again how, where the loading space and the loading is going to happen?
Sure. Vehicle will come down Station Street. If it comes down Station Street, it just has to back up to get back into the space. It'll back up into that area, and it'll stay to the left side. Is it back, the right side? Does it back down it?
Into the garage.
Right, into the garage area. There's going to be plenty of height. It's, we have about 45 feet of depth there, and the truck's 30 feet long, so we've got 15 feet of play to make sure that it doesn't interfere with the sidewalk or anything. And that's from the property line here. So, I think that'll be fine. Provide loading so vehicles won't maneuver on public ways, while an occasional truck comes down in this area here. And it happens everywhere in the Historic District. It's a simple pull-up and backup movement in that particular area. And then, the last one is E, parking lot rates, 4% to 1% minimum. We have a underground parking garage, and underground parking garages are either flat or minimumly sloped, because they don't get snow or rain off. We might have some instantly runoff coming down the drive. That's why we have the trench drain and the maintenance program for it. So, we'll have a gentle pitch, and it may be half a percent, to get it in the MWA trench drain, in case there's any flow down there, but it's very small. Long-term pollution prevention plan. We're off of waivers now. We updated the plan to incorporate the MWR-A oil-water separator, the maintenance program for that, and a highlight of the items that we're applying to the Board of Selectmen for approval. Drainage discharge into the town system. Use of Station Street lot for the commercial component. Eliminate the two parking spaces directly east to the drive. Add one space on North Street. Temporarily use a small portion of Station Street for material staging and construction work or parking, and obtain approval for the construction phasing program, public properties. And we could also discuss with them the occasional semi-trail moving truck, because obviously, there's no way it's coming on our site. We've been pretty clear. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
You mean for tenant move-ins? Could you elaborate for the board?
Yeah. For the tenant move-ins, basically, I think what we'd like, it'll be, we'll schedule it when it happens, off-peak hours, so it's not interfering with problems here. And the way that those typically work, it's a professional moving company that'll do it, and they would be parking down around the Station Street parking lot, or they may be parking, you know, close to the site here. Make the move-in, move the truck, leave it on Station Street. Get everything that needs to be moved out of the truck down into the lower level, so it can be brought up the elevator and moved into wherever it needs to move in. That's about it.
Is there a garage door, or is it open?
It's a garage door down at the bottom.
At the bottom of the ramp?
Yep.
Okay.
Commercial grade and sealed.
Let's move to board questions. Go ahead, Gary.
I have a number of questions about the vehicular and pedestrian activities that are happening at the entrance to the garage. In looking at the garage plan on A1, there's a ramp up, and the arrow is sloping towards the street. Is the, is the grade of the parking lot, the parking garage, higher than the street?
The work, you come right off the street.
It's going up the ramp.
We'll go uphill a little bit, so the water from the street doesn't come down. And then, it slopes down into the garage.
And the ramp slope here is 9%, which I'm sensitive to the Building Commissioner's point relative to the handicap access. Is there any reason why that ramp can't be the 4%?
Yes, because...
The main reason it can't be shallower is because we have to go down a certain dimension. We don't have any greater length to go in order to achieve the fall that we have. But, excuse me, in terms of the potential relationship to the handicap code, that garage ramp is not suitable for an egress path anyway, because it's got an overhead door. In order to be legal as a means of egress, it has to have a side-hinged door, and it doesn't. And in fact, you know, the issue of handicap accessibility, excuse me, in the elevator, it's no different for the garage than it is for this building on an upper floor, or the upper floors of that building. You have an elevated building. If an elevator, or all the elevators, is out of service for any reason, it's out of service. And there's no other things that you can do. There are various building code requirements that start to weigh in, in terms of areas of refuge, sprinklering, all that stuff. We'll go through all of that when we get into actual building permit time, but a vehicular ramp cannot and should not be used for pedestrian access, frankly, especially for someone who might have trouble walking or be in a wheelchair, because their maneuverability is going to be compromised.
I have another question relative to that.
Can I also just?
Yeah, go ahead.
One other quick answer relative to the ADA code, ADA and AAB code. The requirement is where those handicap spaces park. The aisle, the maneuver area, and the actual space itself, and the point from where they get from the vehicle to the car must comply, and is complete compliance with both of those regulations.
My other question involves the functional series of activities, the overlap of activities that's happening at the entrance, the garage entrance. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at your site distance plan, and I'm also looking at the next sheet, which is the site distance overlay plan. And when I look at Station Street, at the garage entrance, it appears to me that Station Street is 20 feet wide, based on scaling from the drawings, and they seem to be very accurate. I'm concerned about a number of things. One is the, the parking that's in the retail areas on the other side of the street is going to be backing into this traffic path. Traffic's going to be coming down Station Street, coming down grade, and by the time they're halfway around the curb, before they see what's happening on those cars, in terms of patterns. But then, I also see there's traffic coming in and out of the garage, and granted, it is not that many cars. But then, I look at the overlay of the, on the site distance traffic sheet on 7.4, C 7.4, and I'm looking at the radius overlay of the truck access point, and I was reading in some of the documentation that there was going to be a 10-foot-wide traffic aisle and a 10-foot-wide parking aisle for loading adjacent, within a 20-foot, I assume to be a 20-foot-wide garage entrance. But what I'm seeing is, is that the reality of the turning radii is, is that whenever there's a truck coming into this facility, there's no access or egress out of the parking garage. And also, the radius overlay of the truck crosses the center line in the roadway, which makes the clear distance from the parking spaces at the retail shops across the street, the pizza store and others, even shorter. So, I'm concerned about the congestion and the safety of that area, and I'm concerned about that in conjunction with the site lines. So, there's a couple of conditions that perhaps you could shed some light on. One is the summer condition, when basically...
Jerry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's just that I'm looking at the clock, and I'm wondering if you, maybe if the whole board has succinct questions that we want to tick off, or that we could provide after the meeting. I mean, we're just not going to be able to get through probably all of our questions. I don't know how, Gordon, you haven't had a chance to speak. Sarah, similarly. I'm sure you have questions, as do I. But unfortunately, I'm also sensitive to the fact that there is public here, and we need, we're required to take public comment at a public hearing. Susan Murphy's shaking her head no at me. But I do want to, if there is new public comment, you know, we have a couple of minutes. So, Gary, I'm sorry to cut you off, and...
Do you want me to put the question in the form of a memo?
Please. Yeah, that would be fine. That would be great. That'd be helpful. If there are members of the public here that have new comment, you know, new questions or comment that they would like to, and Chief, I know you're here, and if you want to comment, especially Chief Olson, but please, if you do have something to say, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Tom Koveney, 34 Middle Street, neighbor of Griggs, for the project. Great improvement over what's there now. I'm a big proponent of connecting the harbor to the town. That eyesore has been there too long, so I think this project is a better-looking than the Settles Glass facility. And in addition, you know, the Lincoln Building you cite, that was a great opportunity to put a new building in there. I don't really like that building. This building is a big improvement for the town to look more like historic town.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to speak?
Just briefly, yes.
Thank you.
I just briefly wanted to say, I originally sent a letter outlining a lot of my problems. I still see the same existing problems with the congestion of the parking coming in and around, in and out of the building, as opposed to the opposite stores next door. I still don't favor increasing the parking on North Street. I still think that's going to be a potential problem. And I've seen it in other places in the square. We all have, and I can cite those. I'd like to correct those, but I don't want to create another spot that we have a similar situation, so. And I think just I'll just stay with my rest of my comments that are already out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have new input? Please.
Hi, I'm Donna Bouvier, and I own Station 27 Hair Salon on Station Street. And I just want to reiterate, I know the concerns that we all have about the traffic and the safety of the people of Hingham driving down on Station Street. It's pretty dangerous already, so. The other situation I have, I know it's going to be 40 feet from my view. The proposed project is 40 feet high from the Station Street side. How is this aesthetically pleasing for us, for our businesses on Station Street? I've seen all the architectural designs and images from the North Street side, but there are none from, no images from Station Street. I would love to see those. Somebody mentioned that there was an abundance of parking on the Station Street lot, parking lot. There is not. I mean, right now, the, all the employees and the people who work down on Station Street use that parking lot. The post office people, workers, all park down there. It's quite full. I have concerns about the retail stores that are going to be in this proposed project, be parking in our spaces, that are already limited. You know, so I'm here to protect my business, and along with all the other Station Street businesses, we have many concerns about the congestion down there, because every day, there is always an accident, or maybe not an accident, but horns beeping, an MBTA bus that comes down... that comes down that street is always on the wrong side of the road, and there is no room for cars to go in and out. So if there's going to be these big trucks and people moving in and out for whatever reason, for moving in people and for the retail, that's going to block our patrons from coming into our businesses. And if we start not having our patrons come to our businesses, we're going to lose our businesses. And I, you know, that's my livelihood. So I'm here to just, you know, I'm not against development. I think it's an eyesore. I agree with you all. It's just a massive size for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. We have about, you know, one more minute after this.
Fred Hussey, 45 School Street. I'd just like to just echo Tom Koveney's comments, just as far as, you know, I just moved recently from the Liberty Pole area of Hingham down closer to the Historical District, and I appreciate all the vetting that goes on to make sure that the town of Hingham, you know, stays the way it's, you know, the way it has been over the hundreds of years. But I do also think that this site is a good thing to be putting into the downtown. The fact that you look at Settles Glass and, you know, the site of that and how they've done the reconstruction of this, I think it's aesthetically, it's going to be great. It's going to be able to have a multipurpose. Facility is also going to be important for the town and for the downtown area. So I just wanted to say I approve, and I hope you will pass it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, I think we need to move on.
There's one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, John Hebs from...
Do you mind coming to the microphone because folks at home can't hear you otherwise? Thank you.
My name is John Hebs. I own the Subgalle, 39 Station Street, and have agreed to purchase the entire building within the near future. I have a lot at stake here. It's a, it's a big project and frankly, I think, too big for the site. I'm against losing the two spaces, the spaces in front of mine and five other tenants are turned over every 15, 20, 30 minutes. To eliminate more is just really going to put a hardship on me for rentability and for the survival of the tenants who are there. If it is to go through, I have a big problem with the staging area on Station Street unless you're going to have a police detail there for eight hours a day. I can envision 20, 30 vehicles coming to work on this building. You pass some houses in this town, and there's eight vehicles, painters, electricians, carpenters, et cetera, on one house. So just, I'm concerned. That's it.
Thank you. And I'm just sensitive to the fact that Gordon and Sarah didn't get to speak. Do you have anything you want to say before we move on?
I don't have any questions on the new material that was presented tonight, so give them the time.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I apologize for my hat and glasses. I'm recovering from a concussion. I just want to, you know, say again that I think there's some great things about this project. I think it is needed to have a connection in the, you know, down to the waterfront. I think what I'm very, very concerned about is the, is the parking garage exit and the safety of that area. I've spent some time just sort of driving down there. I think the combination of the lack of sight distance for the mileage that's stated on that roadway, the MBTA bus coming down there, the cars backing out, I just, I, it makes me nervous as a, you know, to put my sort of fingerprint on this, it makes me nervous. I just feel it's, so I'm very concerned about that. I haven't seen any real, you know, taking out the two parking spaces. I can see that it creates some problems for the business owners. Do think it increases the safety, but we're, you know, impacting other people. I just, I'd still like a lot of answers to questions, and I think unfortunately, we weren't left enough time to do that, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything further? Do you have anything?
Definitely.
Okay, so that being said, I think we need to look to continue. What do you propose, Mary?
Well, I just wanted to also suggest that there hasn't been a lot of testimony on Section 3G, 7B and C. This project needs waivers under 5A and Section 3G. And it's the applicant's responsibility to provide full and complete justification for those waivers. And so we didn't really talk through that tonight, and I would encourage the applicant to provide a narrative to the planning board. Also, if you could provide a little more written explanation of the scope of your parking waivers, I would suggest that there may be some parking waivers that are needed under 5G, the design standards, that might not have been called out. So I would encourage the applicant to look back at that for the board and for suggestions for continuing. Are you going to continue separately?
I think that's the right move at this point, right?
So my main suggestion of the decision deadline is March 11th. Historic Districts Commission is meeting on the first, March 1st, and so it's the board's expectation to continue until after that time. Correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we just need to schedule for a night where we have enough time to go through it all and not have a hard stop at any time, so.
So on, well, to that end, then, for the planning board, on March 5th, you have an agricultural site plan review that might require a good amount of time for that hearing also. And then, and you have another subdivision.
Okay.
So if the, from what I'm hearing from the board is you want a night that you can pretty much close out the project or have it...
I think that would be, I'm sure everyone would like that.
Then my recommendation would be that you go to March 12th. Because if you put it on March 5th, you have three other hours' worth of hearings already on that agenda.
I want to be able to focus on this. Do you guys agree?
Yeah, I'm concerned that we still have a lot of unanswered questions. Certainly, we can pose them to the developer, but, you know, I'm worried about the construction plans. I see those, but I think we need to be much more specific. I mean, there's lots of concerns, I think, that were brought up tonight as well as, I just don't think they're specific enough. But, you know, I don't see the details on them, so I think that needs to be looked at. And, you know, I'll be happy to put some of my questions forward, but I still feel like there are quite a number of unanswered things, so I, you know, I'd certainly like to wrap it up. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Could I suggest that if the board has specific questions, that perhaps you can forward them to me?
Yep.
And I would be able to provide them to the applicant to facilitate that response process?
I think that'd be great.
Swiftly, yep.
Yeah, we can all do that.
Just to give them time to respond.
So if the planning board's looking to continue the hearing to March 12th, typically, we like a buffer to have time to write the decision and get it filed. So normally, we ask for a month. So I would suggest March 12th for the hearing date. I don't, the decision deadline?
Well, Emily, when is our next hearing after March 12th? Because we're not available.
March 20th. The 20th probably seems good.
Yeah, it works for me.
So if we continue to the 20th, then the decision deadline is thinking to extend to April 20th?
Okay. Currently, we have the same decision deadline for both boards. Is that something that we'd be able to do moving forward?
Well, we will need your decision before we can proceed, so.
That's true. Does that work then, Mary? If we meet the 12th and they're meeting the 20th, if we were to reach a decision that night?
We always do our very best to write the decision as soon as possible.
It's a week, huh?
Okay. All right, so does this work for the applicant?
But just to be clear, it's not guaranteed.
No, I mean, these dates, do these dates, I'm asking if these dates work for the applicant? Yeah?
We at seven? Are we at seven, Emily? That night? Okay, thank you.
Planning Board, March 12th.
That's what we're talking about. Would that work for you, Tom?
So our next hearing would be continued to March 12th. The zoning board of appeals' next hearing would be March 20th, and we're proposing extending the decision deadline out to April 20th.
And ideally, we need to get their decision before we can write our decision because we need to incorporate it into our decision.
Robin, the 20th is a Riverstone continuation as well, so depending on timing, that might be already a long night, or just a thought.
I'm not on that hearing, so you tell me.
Neither am I, actually.
I don't know what the expected timeline is for that.
Are you on that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not on Riverstone.
Emily, what's your thought on the 20th?
We have several already continued hearings.
To the 20th?
To the 20th, and then we had already confirmed availability of the panel for Riverstone hearing that evening. We don't have full availability on the 27th, and then we don't have some of the applicant's representatives on the 13th, so I think the 20th is probably...
So we should continue this hearing to a different date?
To another evening, yeah.
Do we want to try that, do two hearings that we can try, that Thursday, the 22nd?
We could do that, or we could look to the 12th.
Thursday's, I have a childcare issue.
Yeah. I can't, sorry.
The 27th?
We could do the following to the 27th. We don't have anything else.
Is that okay with you?
I can do the 27th, absolutely.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Tom? So we need you to sign a request for the continuance.
But I think we could still keep the hearing, the decision deadline, made to the 20th of April.
If you can write and sign.
Not finished yet, so...
We need to vote on the continuance, but we're waiting for a signature. Thank you.
So I move that the zoning board continue this hearing on the application to the 27th of March at 7:00 PM.
Pass it on for Jen, please.
Zoning boards continue.
And I'll make a motion that the planning board continue the hearing on this matter to March 12, 2018, and that we extend the decision deadline to April 20, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Great.
I assume we're moving.
We're moving.
I think you're moving.
That's fine.
Thanks.
They outnumber us.
We staying here?
We stay.
Thank you very much. And we have another hearing starting immediately. Thank you.
Emily, where are we moving to? Downstairs? So that was yours, I found my other copy of the memo.
Hey, we're sitting here, yeah. I did, I'm hungry.
See you later.
How's proceedings?
Oh, well, yeah, I think she and Beth are having dinner.
Wouldn't surprise me.
Nice.
See you, Joe.
No, I just walked in the last night.
We are all going to wear hats and glasses.
Susan, do you want me to move down there or do I just want to sit and tag him?
I should sit together. Where's Bill sitting there?
Yeah.
No, it's Gordon.
I need to be, I need to be here. Bill's coming, right? Yeah.
This is Gordon.
That's Gordon, this'll be Bill.
I just have to step up a little.
Yeah, you do you. All right. Trying to get his wallet. Maybe he can have FedEx tonight, his wallet. Hello. He's such a bummer. Put it up on the way to work. And I guess he works at the... Yeah. Oh, that's a bummer. Yeah, he works at Massport. Hey, Bill. I mean, Mary, where are you? I mean, you okay with me down here?
You guys want to sit together or I can move down there?
Yeah, do you want to? Do you mind, Gary?
That's fine, if you want to sit together.
On the go. I like sitting next to you.
I just, I thought you two wanted to sit together, so.
I'm good.
I got a great...
Yeah, I'm good. Jim.
She's good?
Wait them. Oh, she's moving instead of...
I don't know, I don't know whether we're all, whether we just, why don't we all just move once here?
We should all move. We should rotate. It'll say on the back, it'll say on the back. I'm glad she's doing a bad day.
When you get down, Susan.
She's like Santa Claus, she gives us all... It's a party gift. Yeah.
He loves it.
Thank you.
Is she going to do that again sometime? I told you, we got to see what the request is. I don't know if it's going to bump them up.
Well, you know, I mean, we'll figure out what, you know, what you... And then...
Adrian has the inside.
We're going to do marijuana. Oh, my God.
It's a true story.
I love it, thank you. Still like it.
Yeah, I know, I thought that's it.
But don't overdo it. No, I can't. All right. Oh, Gordon needs a minute. We got to make it. What? Can you hand it to Jen? Yeah. Oops, sorry. Is that for me? Yeah, I was pointing. Okay. I have a lot of protection, so. Oh, gee. 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 Oh, great. It's very nice. It's a nice place for him. And near mom.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a nice place, and...
About 30 minutes from... Oh, right. Tonight? This is for tonight. This is for today. Yeah. This is for tonight. What? Advisory. Do you know one thing, Mary, if you do, she's going to do a gap year. It's the second half of the year, she's going to do a homestay in a foreign country like Iceland or France, 50 countries. And then the second half of the year, she wants to do research, you know, research on someone. If he ever takes undergrad, I mean, you know, before they go to college, kind of, if they need that.
They have some outreach programs and sort of mentoring programs, but it's not a form of kind of a matriculation or anything. It's just more of an exposure. You know, they do a lot of these things. I can find out for you. I know about it generally, I don't know, I don't know about specifically.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll find out.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Kick one down, pass it around. Gordon. Problem resolved. All right. Thank you for your patience. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for proposed amendments to the Hingham zoning bylaw. We have on our agenda the discussing accessory dwelling units, Section 5H registered marijuana dispensaries, Section 3A, a ban on marijuana establishments, the regulation of the sale and consumption of marijuana not medically prescribed, and definitions related to marijuana not medically prescribed. I would like to start this portion of our meeting by going through two of the marijuana amendments, marijuana-related amendments, that I think we can get through very quickly. We have discussed them both at length, thank you, before this, and I think that it's one of these things that we could get done tonight and hand off to advisory, and I don't think, if it creates good, big discussion, I'll be surprised, but we will sort it out. I think that I would ask Mary Ann or Susan Murphy to start with helping us go through where we are on registered marijuana dispensaries.
So this is currently labeled Article JJJ. This is, this is, I believe, is probably going to be separated out from the adult use or recreational or not medically prescribed marijuana, depending on how people are referring to it, because... This is, this is, I believe, is probably going to be separated out from the adult use or recreational or not medically prescribed marijuana, depending on how people are referring to it, because the registered marijuana dispensaries, otherwise known as the medical marijuana, is already within the Hingham zoning bylaw in Section 5H. It is, it's, so it's already on the books, it's a statute that does not permit, ban in any community, it's already been adopted in Hingham. The reason why there's provisions or modifications or amendments proposed by the board this year is because in connection with adopting the adult use or recreational marijuana, the legislature updated some statutory references and some definitions related to medical marijuana. So in order, just so that the Hingham zoning bylaw can be as up-to-date as possible with the state statute, there is, the planning board put forward this amendment. I'll note that the track changes, red line before you, looks like it's significantly changed from what the original warrant article is, however, substantively, the scope of what is being proposed is not. So basically, Item 1, the board had asked Mary to, it was just like a, kind of replace a word with a word, which is kind of hard to follow in the warrant, so the request was to replace the entire sentence, so that makes it look longer in and of itself. But in the process of doing that and reviewing the most current legislation, before it was just a reference to a special act, they have now assigned a master general laws chapter to medical marijuana, which is 94I, and so this section will now reference the most current statutory references. That's Item 1. Item 2, there was already a definition of registered marijuana dispensary in the bylaw. What this does is update that definition, not to change the substance of what a medical marijuana treatment center is, but to make it more in line with the definitions that are in Chapter 94I. And so, and so, Chapter 94I refers to the medical use of, or medical use marijuana, and also provided a definition for medical use of marijuana, so that, that's what's being proposed here. Item 3 did not change, except for a typo. And Item 4, this is the section which, before there was recreational marijuana, said, I'm just summarizing, paraphrasing, other than medical marijuana, there can be no other marijuana, types of marijuana establishments in Hingham, and this just kind of restates it, clarifying that it prohibits any marijuana establishment as defined under 94G, the recreational statute, except and to the extent expressly permitted by zoning or other ordinances in Hingham. So it's, as I said, scope-wise, it's doing the same, it has the same intent of the original warrant article, but it's much, it's much more conforming to current law.
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you. Does anyone have questions? I mean, it seems to me very straightforward, this is what we talked about before, we're making the correct statutory references and clarifying the definition.
I think it's ready for action.
Okay, I'd welcome a motion, if you'd like.
We need to comment.
Oh, does anyone here tonight to comment on this particular zoning article? No? Okay, seeing no one interested?
Then I would make a motion that the planning board acts favorably on zoning article JJJ, amending Section V-8, registered marijuana dispensaries. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, Susan. The next zoning bylaw amendment that I think we should take up tonight, because we have been talking about it since November, and we've been unanimous on this since November, is the ban on recreational marijuana, and what I, I'd like to start by listing the reasons that I have sort of kept track of and thought about over time, that we all have come to this conclusion, but I, of course, welcome you to add on at the end for any additional reasons. So the planning board has received a great deal of public input on the question of a ban of recreational marijuana establishments in town. The majority of the public comment has been in support of the ban at this time, but we have also received some public comment from residents who support the sale of recreational marijuana and other uses in town. You know, the planning board is a zoning, a zoning body, and it's the role of zoning to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. This, this is an important one to me, this industry is evolving rapidly, and the state regulations will not even be final until March 15, 2018, and I think that we've all expressed concerns about being asked to take a position on this matter before we even know the, the final regulations, and so that, that's another, to me, very good reason for supporting the ban. There are many unknowns right now with regard to how this use will be regulated by the state, there still seem to be many questions yet to be answered by the Cannabis Control Commission, state leaders have expressed concerns about the scope of the proposed regulations and the potential impacts or unintended consequences. Additionally, you know, federal enforcement of the federal laws are unclear at this time, it just, those reasons all, to me, stack up for good government reasons, that the town of Hingham doesn't need to be out in front of this, and that we can take our time, and as a town, watch how this plays out, and it doesn't mean never, it's a ban certainly, but it doesn't mean it couldn't be addressed again at some time in the future when the landscape is more clear. It seems prudent to let these state regulations get finalized, and really understand thoroughly through the lens of experiences of other towns, how this industry operates in our state, and what effect the uses have on the different towns and their residents. I will also say that it's important, I think, also to note that while we are simultaneously working on a time, place, and manner regulation, that this shouldn't be interpreted, at least, it's my, it's my opinion, but we have talked about this as a group, that the planning board supports recreational marijuana, so I just want to be clear that we're doing the time, place, and manner regulation only in the, in the idea that if the ban were to fail, we need something ready to be able to properly regulate it in town. So if anyone, before we get into talking through the ban again, does, if anyone has any other reasons they want to chime in on?
I think you covered the myriad reasons why it makes sense for us to, to go slow on this. I think we have, you know, it's, it's very frustrating to be put in a position where, where we're gonna have to act without final regulations, particularly as much as the regulations have evolved in the short time that they've been, been out there. If we think back, just for comparison purposes, when, when medical marijuana was, was approved and the regulations were finalized, and they opened up that application process, I think if we recall, that was a fairly bumpy process. So recent history doesn't suggest that this is going to be necessarily smooth either. I totally agree that we don't need to be on the front of this, the front line of this process. I think having the information from the school committee we do before us, and from the chief of police, and from the superintendent, and all of that, that it seems pretty clear there's, I think there's little to be gained to, by moving quickly, and that moving a little bit more prudently makes an awful lot of sense.
I think from my perspective, the, I totally share and agree with what's been stated previously. I look on a situation like this to the folks who are dealing with the consequences of substances, and, and substance abuse and misuse, and I appreciate what, what folks in Hingham have brought to the board, especially Hingham Cares, for example, has basically been looking at data in younger people, you know, teenage people, especially people who are at that early phase of vulnerability in terms of potential addiction development and what have you, and, and I'm seeing that, and some precedent information here in Oregon and also in Colorado, both states which have had legalization of recreational marijuana, and what I'm seeing is, is that there's some very interesting data here relative to number of visits to marijuana-related issues, relative to problems that these, these folks have experienced in, and the, and the, the mind-altering substance that got, got them there to that point of compromise, and the cases in terms of the percentage of increases, you know, 45% plus or minus, so that's fairly significant. The other thing I'm really concerned about is the issue of the gateway substance and the gateway drug, as much as, you know, you look back, I went to Woodstock, so one, one says to me, well, you know, why are you against this?
You outrank me, though.
And, and so I say, well, you know, I wasn't, not everybody was wild and crazy in that way, but on the other hand, I think people realize the, you know, it's, the gateway was definitely, definitely an issue, so I think it's really prudent to kind of proceed cautiously, and, you know, clearly we have to wait and see what the state and the federal government do, but to me, the more important thing is how people who are keeping people away from addiction approach these kinds of substances.
Thank you. Phil?
Just a brief comment, I did not go to Woodstock. I wasn't, Gary, hate to tell you this, I wasn't even born yet.
Thanks, Bill. He whipped me, he whipped me.
Yeah, I echo the comments of the board, and I, based on that, we've received a lot of good public input on both sides of it, and I read all of it, I appreciate it, but I will, I think Jennifer made a good point of this, but I want to explain to everybody that, based on the public input we received, that we are advancing two articles, which I think is, I credit the board for doing our due diligence here. The, a ban would require a two-thirds voted town meeting. The time, place, manner article that we're going to talk about next is an article that, should the ban fail, then that ban, that article will now come into play, so that didn't seem to be too clear to me from some of the public comment we got, but I want to clarify that for people, as Jennifer did, and I think it's the board doing its due diligence more than anything else, so I'm, I'm ready to take action on this article tonight, and also will allow the board of selectmen to move forward with their, their related articles, well.
Sarah?
Yeah, I won't add a lot, I think the chief sort of convinced me, I was sort of on the fence, but I think the edibles is a real concern for me, and sort of how, how we deal with that, so I do think now being on the front end of this is a good thing, and I agree with my colleagues' comments.
Thank you. Susan, do you want to talk about where we are on the text of the ban?
Right, I can't, I can't remember if we, what we covered on the fifth, so just quickly, because it'll take...
No, let's just do it.
One minute. From the original warrant article, there's two proposed changes. The one is just the deletion that's shown on the track changes, version 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 line, where it said onsite consumption of marijuana at a marijuana retailer location. Based on the draft regulations, onsite consumption might be allowed at all different types of establishments, not just marijuana retailers, so it seemed, in order to not create some sort of implied limitation on the ban, it was, it's recommended to delete that language. John Cofflin is also recommending the identical change for the general bylaw to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
The second item was just, is a cleanup, there's currently the moratorium, that's at Section 5J, if there will be a complete ban, then it's, would be appropriate to repeal 5J and not have any regulation, you know, have a second regulation related to recreational marijuana in the zoning bylaw. So those are the two recommended changes to the original warrant article, again, still consistent with the intent and scope of the original warrant article.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone here from the public tonight wish to speak on the issue of the ban? If you, would you mind please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hello, I'm Jennifer Burtner, I'm from 16 and 22 Powers Lane in Hingham, and I'm speaking in strong support of a ban. I think actually some of the comments that you made here are very good, that the board's function is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the overall population. Mr. Dandore Dix comments about worries about its impact, whether intended or unintended, as someone had said, on the general population, I think is really critical here. I'm often struck, because I have lived in Hingham my whole life, I'm a social anthropologist who have MA and PhD in social anthropology, I've worked in public policy nationally, both here in the United States and internationally, I've lived in many areas internationally where drug production takes place, from Mexico to Central America to South America. I've also lived in El Paso, Texas, where we had to sell our house at one point, because the drug areas, the whole area had turned to drugs, because, when Juarez went bad. Having grown up with a part of our family down there and being able to cross the border into Juarez easily, to see how an area can go bad, and you can literally lose your neighborhood and your home. That brings me to coming back to Hingham, where I thought I was coming back to raise my children after college and working internationally, finding a beautiful historic home to restore with my husband and all my children, to find I had moved into one of the areas with the largest opiate problem in the town, one of the highest surveillance of police, with one of the highest numbers of overdoses. Now, the reason I bring this up, as many people in the common parlance of today is that somehow marijuana and opiates are not connected. I beg to differ. For 14 years, I have lived next to a place that has had a direct connection between marijuana and heroin, and for this, I would like to actually, am I allowed to offer something written?
Absolutely, yes.
To this board? I would like to actually, I think it's important, I'm always told in Hingham, we respect our history, but in order to respect our history, we have to know our history, and the only way we can know our history is to talk about our history. And it's very important, I believe, that each and every person on this board and working in these offices, and indeed, every person in the town of Hingham who is going to vote at the town meeting on this thing, read this deposition. This is a deposition that's before Judge Chen in the Brockton Superior Court, of a man who was convicted as a trafficker of marijuana, and for bribery of public officials in this area. Marijuana trafficking, went to, I'll let you read it, and everybody in Hingham can read it, went on to be one of the most active people involved in opiate use and distribution in this area, in Hingham. 14 years I lived next to this man. We are in court with, trying to address some of these issues, because, and this is where we get into the unintended consequences, and I'm speaking from a public policy perspective, there are laws that say heroin distribution, and indeed, under federal law, marijuana, my children even say, you're old, because you know what we call it? We call it weed in junior high and high school, you don't even know what to call it. And I said, my goodness, my children are correcting me, as I get ready for this meeting tonight, my children. So, I'm getting ready for this, they say you go, they're sick, they're at home, but they say you go to this meeting and you tell them what's really happening in our neighborhood, next to our house, the reason why we can't walk down our streets, the reason why we had to move our bus stop to go to East Elementary School, because there were too many people hanging out who were high, syringes on the ground, people who coming up and touching the children. We had to move our bus stop because it was not safe because of drugs, and there were as many people getting high on the porch as smoking pot as injecting. So I think it's very important that every person on this board read this deposition, it's lengthy, we were in there a long time, it covers 14 years, it covers the Commonwealth's actual cases against this drug trafficker, and of course, the deaths of all the women who died in his trailer of heroin overdoses, only women, mind you, which is not statistically actually the regular thing, usually there's some men in there, so that also brings some other unintended questions up, of who's dying, where, under what circumstances, do their families ever find out where they died, how they died? We have found some very tragic information in looking into this, and we only looked into it to protect ourselves, because our homes were being broken into, we were being threatened, and once we spoke out, back in 2015 against the drugs, the retaliation against us went through the roof. We were followed, we were threatened to be beaten up, to be killed, people waited for us with weapons, people tried to hit us with our cars, they followed us to third locations to run us off the road, because we spoke out against drugs in this town, and we were told there was nothing that could... And we were told there was nothing that could happen unless we filed a civil suit against drug dealers. So we did, $230,000 of legal costs later, we haven't even started the trial yet. The burden that you might be putting on the people who live next to these dispensaries, because I guess you could say, I've been living next to a dispensary, not a legal one, but I don't foresee our town is being ready in any way, shape, and form for what I've seen in the last 14 years of doing any better with legal dispensaries, as they've done with this illegal dispensary where people have been dying, whether they're high by smoking pot, or they're high because they've been injecting heroin. They get in their cars, they drive on the roads. There's a lot of things that need to be talked about, and it's just not the wording of the statute. It's what this is going to do to us and our children, and I will tell you, this has been the most horrible thing, and if I didn't love this town so much, I would have left it. Please read this. Please tell me you will read this. It has been more costly than I can tell you to be able to bring this to you tonight, and I thank God I lived along, I was, I was diagnosed two years, three years ago with cancer, and I kept going on this, because I figured it was worth it. So when I say take the time, I took the time, please take the time, please post this, people need to know what's happening in this town. What I am hearing in this conversation around marijuana and at the state level, I'm shocked at the romanticization of what they think is going on out there, and the suffering, they're talking about this as alleviating suffering, you have no concept of the suffering that is going on in these people's lives, and of those people who have to live around them. I beg you to ban this. I beg every person who's listening on their televisions to look at their kids and the people around them, their cousins, their nephews, their nieces, and if you've lost people, come out and speak out against this. We're getting tired, but we won't stop, but we need help, yours and everyone out there as well. This is our town, we're the only ones that can save it, and we don't have to go along with every other town. We can save ourselves yet.
Thank you. Give it to Mary. And I can tell you that we post all public comment on our website, and that this board reads every comment that is submitted.
And all the exhibits from the deposition is there as well.
Yep, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on the ban?
Copy, so I'll have to scan it and put it on. There's only one, um, scan it and put it on.
Yep, great, well, I'll see it, it'll be on the website. Are people feeling like it's in current, in its current condition, it's ready to move forward? Okay, entertain a motion.
It's zoning article GGG?
Yep.
Is that where we are?
Yeah, up here. That's right.
So I'll make a motion to approve zoning article GGG, Session 3A, a ban on marijuana establishments.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. Okay, having just moved those two forward. Susan? I would actually, I want to propose at this time that we switch gears. I think that we had, we've talked about the time, place, and manner regulation, and it definitely deserves more of our thought, but we also have accessory dwelling units on our plate, and I think that we made it clear that that was our intention to talk about this tonight, so I would like at this point to switch to the accessory dwelling units discussion, and give me one moment, I'll shuffle my papers. So where we are on accessory dwelling units is that Mary sent us a clean version of some edits that she made based on our conversation at our last hearing, and she asked us to make edits. She asked us to come to tonight's meeting with edits if we have them, so that we can hopefully march through it and make some good progress tonight. So I'll start. I thought about where we are, I thought about the fact that, in Bill's words, I think, this past fall, it's time, it's high time to let town meeting decide on accessory dwelling units. But what I heard from my colleagues on this board is that we want to put something forward that is limited in scope, something that is appropriate for Hingham, and we need to find the right balance of what is limited and appropriate for Hingham, but not overly restrictive, so that no one can actually avail themselves of the bylaw and create an accessory dwelling unit. So I looked at the limits in the proposed language, the language that is still primarily from the working group, and I think some of them are very good, especially the requirement that the accessory dwelling unit or the primary dwelling are owner occupied. I think that mitigates a lot of the risks that neighbors have about multiple units. The limits on the size of the accessory dwelling unit, I think, are good, and so I went through it, and I proposed taking some of the other limits out, which we can get to, but I just want to tell you on a high level, sort of where I ended up on this. I proposed taking some of the other limits out, the requirement that the dwelling is there for two years prior to having an ADU, for example, and the special permit expiring after three years. I don't think that those two specifically serve our main purpose, and I think that there are better ways to mitigate those risks that are, that I think those we're trying to mitigate. But I did add several new limitations, and we'll go through it, and I asked, I actually made copies right when I got here tonight, so Mary can pass out my chicken scratch edits. But I put in some new limitations, a cap on the number of accessory dwelling units townwide, that wasn't in the version that we had been working from, and then a requirement that the owner certify via a notarized letter to the building commissioner that they will occupy the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit as their primary residence, and then an ongoing annual certification process that the building commissioner is already on board with, where each year the owner will certify to the building commissioner that they continue to occupy either the primary dwelling or the ADU as their primary residence.
How often?
Annually. So initially to get the permit, and then annually thereafter. So that being said, you know, hopefully you came with edits as well, but...
I did, actually, if I could.
Yeah.
Jen, I did some serious review and have a series of edits that I'd like to also propose, and I have some copies for the AdCom representatives here too, or the people in the audience, that I'd like to review with you.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for clarification. So we have the, these markups, here you go. I'm just getting confused, just on base on date, so is there a revised draft from the last hearing that you're working off of, or are we just working off?
That's what this is, that's what this is, the, at least on the...
Because this says January 29th, so is this, is this the...
That was the last hearing.
That was the last time we talked.
Okay, and were any, and so this includes any changes discussed?
That Mary made, yeah, so you weren't in the room, so Mary made edits, no, it's okay, I'll just back up. Mary made edits to the document based on our conversation at the last hearing, and then issued us Clean and Black Line. I took the Clean, and then from there, thank you, made comments.
Okay.
And Susan, just a clarification, I took the same draft that was the, distributed on Monday, as a result of our last meeting, series of meetings, and I added my edits in in red, I highlighted them in red in the text.
Great, okay. So why don't we try to go through it, and Gary, I'll, I'll lead, but let's jump in and look and see how your comments and my comments mesh, and I'm sure everyone else will have comments as we go along as well. My edits in the beginning paragraph are really just typographical, so I would like to move to the purpose. I just sort of moved things around a little bit. I incorporated C, I didn't think C stood on its own as a purpose, I thought it made sense to move it into one sentence, that I think will be easier if I read it to you. So I think that the main purpose of this accessory dwelling unit bylaw is to provide accessory dwelling units without adding to the number of buildings in town, or substantially altering the appearance of the dwelling, neighborhood, or town, and for the purpose of enabling owners of single-family dwellings to share space and the burdens of homeownership, while also protecting the stability, property values, and residential character of the surrounding neighborhood.
I would agree with that, Jen. I was going back to, I went back through and looked at a number of the discussions we had when the committee met in 14 and 15, and also was trying to think a bit about the whole purpose, as to how did we get started on this. And when I talk with, you know, the majority of people that I've talked to, and I ask them, what is their understanding of what we are doing here? And basically, people see this as more of a, an opportunity to, for a person who is living in a house that's perhaps larger than they currently need, to accommodate a familial situation, i.e. a situation where there's a family member, or somebody related to them, or somebody in the larger context of the definition of family, to be in this house, in this unit. But what people have not seen this as is a business venture, which is economic in nature, and as a business basis to it, because that, to me, moves more towards the idea of a two-family. And I think what's, what's always been on my mind, and has been on the mind of the folks and who spent 15 meetings on the study committee, and also I think on the planning board in terms of our two meetings that we've had on this, is the issue of being very careful as to what is an accessory unit versus a two-family zoning provision. And I think that to that, to that degree, I also went back and looked at, I was listening at our last hearing, to Mr. Patch was talking about the history of zoning since 1941, and I just wanted to understand also, whenever I look at an issue, I like to go back and look at the history and what went before it, and what was the basis, and how did we get here? And there's been a significant movement in Hingham since 1941 to move away from multifamily zoning to single-family zoning, and it's been done on four separate study committees, and it was done by the planning board, recommended to, and passed by town meeting, where originally there was a single-family attached or detached residence, there was a two-family residence, both allowed originally in 1941 by right, because they had been allowed before they adopted the zoning bylaw, and it was one of the ways to grandfather property, so people wouldn't lose the benefit of something that they had, or their rights wouldn't be taken away if they were already there, which is totally legitimate. But in 1950, in the early 50s, 54 and 55, they basically took a two-family residential house type out of the, originally, they changed it to be allowed by special permit, and then they took it out of the bylaw altogether. And the, and I bring this up because I think in terms of, it goes to the character of the town, it goes to the residential or the physical character of the town, I'm not talking about the personal character, I'm talking about the settlement character. The direction in zoning for 75 years has been to move to the single-family as the house type in the town, which is the basis of the property values in the town. And it's the basis of the character of the town, and it's also the basis of why people move here. And so I'm just concerned, looking at the history and being respectful of that history, making sure that what we don't, we do, doesn't do something that's a departure that goes against the overall historical value, community value system that's been set up in the town. Now, that being said, I also, you know, totally understand and respect the need for certain situations where people need to have space within a residence for an adult child, or a parent, or something like that. That's always been the context that I've seen this issue develop in, and what I'm concerned about, when I go back and look through the bylaw draft, and all of our iterations and revisions to this draft, I'm concerned that we haven't said that, and we, and that the draft doesn't really provide those protections. What it really does is focus more on allowing two dwelling units on a lot versus a single, one dwelling unit on one lot, which is the basis of current zoning.
Yeah. Gary, I'm glad you brought this up, because I agree that, I think we've all, or most of us have said at one point or another, that when we all initially think about this, and Bill, I think you stated this quite plainly at our last meeting, we do all initially picture an in-law apartment, or an adult child living there, and that's sort of the easiest, the easiest one to imagine, and the one that everyone can sort of say, oh yeah, that makes total sense. A few things on that point. I was persuaded at our last hearing by Susan Murphy Town Council, that in our modern day, the definition of family is not something we can weigh in on, and that it is a quagmire legally in terms of describing who therefore is allowed to live in that accessory dwelling unit, and that, if I remember correctly, Susan, you said that other towns have had their definitions of family in various contexts struck down, in fact, by the courts. So that's one thing. Second of all, I think that if you take the next step, right, picture an elderly person living in their home, and their children don't want to live with them, or don't live nearby, they live in California, or they live in Europe, why shouldn't we allow that person to age in place and create the same accessory dwelling unit? And yeah, sure, earn rental income, and that's what allows them to stay in that home that they rose, they raised their children in, right? So I totally hear what you're saying, and I do agree that that, for almost everyone, is the starting point. I have been persuaded for multiple reasons that that next step is mitigated by something that we do have in the current draft, which is the requirement that the, either the accessory dwelling unit or the primary dwelling be owner occupied. And I think that, for me, is the big issue, that you're not living next to a two-family that is run by a property management company, you're not living next to a two-family that you don't know anybody there, or, you know, no, they're coming and going all the ti, it's, the owner is still going to live there. And what, as I mentioned already, and we haven't gotten to it yet, what I have proposed is actually that in order to be, receive the special permit, the owner would need to provide a notarized letter to the building commissioner stating that they will occupy one unit or the other as their primary dwelling, and an annual recertification of that process. So I actually think that, and maybe Susan needs to weigh in, but I'm not sure we are, we can limit it to just family, as I understand that that is the easiest sort of, simplest hurdle to get over. I don't know if others have a...
So I would say, Jen, I see where you're going, and I think you're right, I think there always is the option of, let's say it is a family in-law type of a situation, and then the family situation changes, and then the unit is there, and then the unit is out for rent. So yes, I do agree that one aspect of providing protections to the neighbors and to the, and to the town is the issue of owner occupancy. However, I also look at some of the other, and I looked at two things when I look at this, at this bylaw, as I would with any bylaw. What are the consequences, and what are the protections? And so if I were to look at, and I like to put it in the realistic context of a neighborhood situation, and let's say there's two situations. One is a larger, older house that's six to eight rooms, and it's built at a time when the configuration of the house could accommodate another unit within the envelope, without major changes to the envelope, or to the house, or to the character of the house within the neighborhood. And by and large, those houses are the 17th through 19th century houses on the byways. And then, but those were produced and developed at a time when zoning was different. Then I look at the houses that are in the subdivisions, and I look at the single-family houses, and they're on smaller lots, and they're generally smaller in size, and they're also closer together. And I say to myself, okay, what are the ramifications of, for example, if one wanted to put a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit in a house that's 1,800 to 2,000 square feet, which is the typical size of a smaller subdivision house, how do I then look at that relative to what's the relationship physically, and also in terms of density, what's the relationship and ramification to the neighborhood? And then I go to the other aspect of what's the purpose of zoning, and I think the purpose of zoning is to protect the abutters. And I look and say, what rights and redress would the abutters have relative to this type of a change coming in next door? And, you know, with all of the focus on need, and it's great to provide a second unit, that notwithstanding, I look at the ramifications, and I say to myself... I look at the ramifications and I say to myself, there would be probably more of an issue in terms of enlarging the house by thirty percent in a small house in a residential neighborhood that's a subdivision. And I'm just saying that one has to look at these realities because these realities would have a more direct relationship to the abutters. And how do the abutters deal with this now?
So Gary, let's, we were at the purpose, right?
Right. And I know, but it's related. It's all related to, you know, the purpose is focusing more on the need or the perceived need, but it's not focusing also on the protections.
Right. And the protections come later in the requirements.
It has to be a balance here. So if the purpose is to provide something that's more small-scale and familial, which is what's always been expressed to me in terms of when we discuss this, how do we focus on that in terms of controls and protections? Or is the purpose fundamentally to allow two dwelling units on one lot? And then, then you have to get to the, and I went to the model bylaw, which I thought was quite good in explaining the difference, and also setting up a purpose and a focus so that this isn't two-family zoning in disguise. And I think we have to be very careful because if this is, a lot of towns that, on the committee, we looked at fifteen towns. And we looked at towns that went too far, too fast and are trying to redact what they did and can't. And we also looked at other towns on the other side of the spectrum like Concord, which I think has a very successful bylaw, but that bylaw also is very tight.
So I think we have a threshold question as to whether or not we intend to limit this to family. So I think that we need to hear from others on the board. I think that that's a, I think you're identifying that as a threshold issue in the purpose that is not included in the purpose yet and you're adding it. So to me, it seems like we need to maybe hear from others on this.
I would very much like to limit the family, but I listened to Susan at the last hearing. I think she did raise some good points there, but I do agree with Gary. And I've always looked at this as a mother-in-law, a father-in-law, a disabled adult child, somebody who's aging and wants to stay within their residence, but they want their children to move in. So I think the owner occupied option is very good and is very creative, Jennifer. I commend you on that. But if we can put family in here, I would support that because I do agree with a lot of the comments that Gary said. I just don't, Susan raised a pretty good objection at the last meeting.
Well, it wasn't an objection. It was a caution. So I did, I did go back and look at, in fact, I have Mark Cullings chart from the committee from a few years ago and looked at recent AG municipal law unit decisions on, there weren't a lot of them. There were only a handful. And then also looked at some of the bylaws that, I mean, from the towns that the committee looked at. And interestingly, of the fifteen or so that were on Mark's chart, only three of them actually had family occupancy limitations. Concord was not one of them. It's unrestricted as to who could live there. But there were only three out of the fifteen. So I don't know if that's, you know, if you look at all of them across the entire state, if that's the same percentage. But it's, you know, less than thirty percent, right? So it's fifteen, so I can't do math, so don't ask me. But, you know, it's obviously less than thirty because we're talking about fifteen. So maybe it's what, fifteen percent, twenty percent only limit to family. So that's one thing to keep in mind. When, when you talk about relationships, it gets a little dicey too. And I'm also wondering when I'm looking at these now, these three, Andover, Milton and Rockland, whether, I don't know how long they've been in place. But there was a recent decision, which I have here. Walpole actually just decided in January twenty, it was in October seventeenth, twenty sixteen, town meeting, fall town meeting, in which they, for an accessory in-law suite, restricted it to third degree of kinship and listed who could live there, parents, siblings, grandparents, and got a mega caution from the, that's a technical term, mega. A very strong caution from the Attorney General's office, citing to Supreme Court cases, that's saying, once you start defining degrees of kinship, that you are potentially putting a, you know, cleaving into family relationships. Because this is parents, children, siblings, grandparents, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, great-grandparents. And there was a case where, you know, well, what if someone's adopted or someone is? Yeah, they gave examples of, oh, a grandmother living with her son and two grandsons who were cousins but not brothers. So there was a relationship between, you know, I, there was, there was a, I don't know, there was, and there was a restriction on the grandmother living there with two grandsons who were not brother. I mean, it would started getting to when, at what point do you stop defining family? So, you know, like I said, for example, Rockland has a family definition. And, well, I'm just trying to answer the question. So it says, so this is one that I think if the Attorney General was approving it now, this one goes back to nineteen ninety-four. And this decision from the AG came out in twenty seventeen, so we got to look at the evolution of it. In nineteen ninety-four, Rockland adopted one and it has the same, it doesn't say third kinship, but it has the same list as Walpole, possibly Walpole copied from Rockland. But the AG is now saying this is suspect, what you're trying to do here. So, you know, like I said, they're out there with family restrictions. If the board felt from a policy perspective that that is what they thought was in the best interest, you know, I think the board should put forward what it thinks is the best policy for the town. I would just say there's a fair chance that it might not be stricken, but it would come with a caution. And if the town attempted to enforce it, might not be able to enforce it in the future. So, you know, I wish I could say it's black and white, but it seems to be evolving in the law. So that just kind of gives a, I hope that gives a little bit more context, Bill. So anyway, I had interrupted Bill in his statement.
No, no, it does. Perfect. I mean, one of the things that.
Wait, Gordon had something to say, Gary. Was Bill done?
So, other than the Attorney General's caution though, they've never been challenged, right? I mean, the one that has the family relationship since nineteen ninety-four, right, is, right?
Right. So they're, so the only, the challenges come more in the context of not accessory dwelling units. It comes in the context of, and it happens a lot in college towns. There's been a number of cases in college towns where landlords have a five or six-bedroom house and they lease it to six college students. But the zoning bylaw says that any, anyone, you, four or more unrelated persons or five or more unrelated persons living together is not a family. Like they kind of draw a line. You can have a total of three or you can have a total of four, but you can't go more than that. And in, in that context of, you know, not wanting to have single-family homes and single-family residences turn into frat houses, then the courts have said you can prohibit the total number of completely unrelated people living together. You know, I just know, you know, I don't know, I'm thinking Hingham's definition, based on its wording, probably goes back to early zoning. I don't know if there were definitions in nineteen forty-one, but probably soon after that. And a family is one or more persons of recognized family relationship maintaining a common household, including domestic help. So you can have unrelated people as long as they're domestic help. So I'm saying, I think that this is a very longstanding, but there are very few of the definitions. So I did look and I didn't get, we didn't have time and associate in my office going through them. But most of, Concord didn't even have a definition of family. And, but most of the towns have some number of unrelated persons can live together. Usually the, it ranged from like three to five. So, you know, this is, this is an area that Hingham has not spent a lot of time revisiting on the family. So again, I guess my conclusion is just, it hasn't been struck down by the AG's office, but it may not be enforceable in the long run.
But I would say, Susan, some of the research that I've been looking at, you know, some of the definitions of family that have been upheld. For example, this one case, a person living independently or a group of persons living as a single household unit using housekeeping facilities in common, but not to include more than three purses, persons unrelated by blood, marriage or adoption. So I think, I guess what I come back to is, it's really more important as to what do we want that would be uniquely appropriate to Hingham rather than what's the common denominator that other towns are doing and thereby we should do that? I think we should go for what we want. I don't see that there's ever been a successful challenge to that. I'm not sure there would be, but it seems to me that it would address the specific need. I also haven't.
I'd like to hear from Sarah on this issue, if you want to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Bill and Gary are saying that family is, you know, sort of the impetus of this whole thing. So, you know, I don't want to get into a legal quagmire, so I sort of trust Bill's being the lawyer.
Well, I trust Susan.
And you know, as I, and as I've said, they haven't been. The bylaw, so for example, even Walpole, the AG did not strike it. They just said, you may not be able to enforce this. It may violate Supreme Court decisions. And so, you know, I, again, I think as Jen said, you're kind of at a threshold question that the board should decide. I don't, I would just say, if the board wants to go with that, I just wouldn't put it in the purpose section. I would just put it in the, you know, in some of the other.
In eligibility requirement.
Or, you know, some other place. But I guess, you know, it's up to the board what you want to do.
And please have it clear so that when staff has to enforce it, it's some parameters that are very clear during permitting.
Do I have a, do I have a?
Family-related comment?
Yeah, I think all things being equal, we should try to find a way to, at least at this stage of the bylaw, try to make that clear. But I guess, let me ask it a different way because, and this is a question that I genuinely don't know the answer of. One of, one of the earlier versions we saw said no rental for an accessory dwelling unit, right? You have one that says no rent, no rental for six months or less, whatever it is. But if you can't rent it out, they're not going to have anybody living there that isn't family.
Well, and I would just ask, going to the purpose, if you're allowing people to age in place and be able to afford to stay in their home, does that mean if, even if it's the grandson living there, he can't pay rent because now it's rented out? Right. So that's what I'm saying.
But I don't think they're going to make their grandson sign a lease either. I mean, if they work out some kind of agreement, then they can do that.
Right, right.
But, you know, if the message is, this is, these are not intended to be rental properties. These are intended to be family accessory units.
I would say that, I would just say that if you're going in the direction of limiting it to family members, do you need to state that it can't be a rental? Because you're fine if they make a financial arrangement with their family members to stay there. So I just say, do you, you know, would you need both if you're limiting it to family?
Right.
But if you're saying we can't limit it to family, I was just saying it didn't work right.
No, that's, that's, right. But that's, what I'm saying is how you define fam, if you use fam.
Like our definition of family.
You know what? I think that the definition of family in Hingham is one or more persons of recognized family relationship. So it doesn't go, it's not as narrow as Walpole's, which defined a degree of kinship, right? And so that really leaves it wide open, what's a family relationship? So it could be marriage, blood, adoption, those things Gary said.
Right, right, right.
So it may kind of, the whole, you know, different, evolving type of family might be, might still.
Or the domestic servant, though, too.
Much more inclusive than someone that has the definition.
Right. So, but it's, because it says including domestic help, it means that someone could have a caregiver, an au pair, right? Because that's domestic help. So it does allow for that other prevalent use where someone has some type of live-in help, whether it's babysitters, whatever.
Right, yeah.
So I, so I think if we can put family in here, that would make me very comfortable with supporting this. In addition to some of the other safeguards, you've mentioned many of the safeguards Gary mentioned. I think, but I think the family concept would make me comfortable supporting this. And I will just say that everybody who has come to me in town to tell me about their support, you know, as supporters of this have all mentioned the family concept.
Absolutely.
They've said, hey, we're getting older. My wife and I are getting older. We would like something like this. We'd like, you know, we have an aging mother or father. They have a disabled adult child. I haven't had one person come up to me and say, I want an in-law apartment so I can rent it and make some dough. No one has ever said that.
No one says that. That's true.
So that's why I think that would eliminate a lot of the issues we have. If we can somehow do it, and Susan's right though, it does get complicated. But that's, those are my comments.
So let's play this out just for a hot second. You have an elderly person that you say daughter and her family comes and moves in, so they make an in-law apartment for grandma to move into. I'm not saying, I like the family as much as everybody else. I really do. That's everyone's first instinct, as I already said. But what do we actually expect? I just want to live in reality. What is going to happen with that unit when grandma is no longer living there, right? This person has made, and I'm just counterpointing because that's what I do. If someone has made an investment in their home, right? They've created this entirely new unit. Is it our expectation that they're going to tear the walls down and make it back into a single family unless they have another family member that moves in there? Or do we realistically think at that point they might rent it out to a, to a third party? And I just want to talk that through. I'm not advocating that. I'm saying, let's talk that out.
Put slightly differently, is that a deterrent to them actually doing it, right? If they know that they can't rent it out at the end, will they, are they less likely to, to, to make that investment so the, the, the family member can live there, right? I mean, it, it could, it could defeat the purpose.
I think also the question I would ask too is, in a situation where an in-law apartment is permitted, the in-law apartment, when no longer lived in by an in-law or a family member, is not available on the private market in, as part of in-law restrictions to get the permit for an in-law apartment. Now, I think that there are a number of options. I also know that there are shared family situations where I have two family units related, part of the same overall family, consistent with the Hingham definition, living in the same house. And if the two, even if they have separate kitchens and separate bathrooms, the spaces are open to one another. They're not physically partitioned from one another. And that's something that's, that's being done at this time now in the town. And, and so I think, you know, you could set this up so that it can be converted back to a single family. But I don't buy the precedent that it has to automatically go to a two-family situation if it starts out as a family residential.
No, I'm not suggesting that it has to. I'm asking, what do we think is realistically? So Sarah, I posed the question of, let's play out an in-law apartment where we say family and they legitimately make it for grandma and then some, you know, time passes and now grandma's not in there anymore. What do we think is realistically going to happen with a family that has made this investment to have a separate unit within their home? Do we think, are we going to say you can't rent it out at that point even though your situation has changed? Or, you know, I just wanted to bounce that around.
Well, I think I would look at the demographics too. I mean, I'm not sure I know the answer to it, but I think I'd, actually I'd look at. at two things. One is, I'd look at the demographics in terms of where the generations are. I know a lot of people who have adult children who can't quite live on their own and come back for, live in the main, the family house for a little time and go off and do their thing again. The, but it's key that they have their own independent spaces within the house. So, I'm thinking, I look at the demographics now, or going back to what it was when I was younger. But I also think, I also look at the density and I look at the dimensional controls relative to this, and I look at what a couple of other bylaws have done. For example, Concord has set up a situation where the overall building size can never be greater than a certain proportion of its original size. And so, you know, in other words, instead of just saying, "Yeah, you can do prescriptively 900 square feet and call it an ADU," they also say, "If you do that, you have to do it within an equation that's no greater than one-third, one-fifth of the original size of the original house, including all appendages." Now, it also specifically excludes connections, pervlers, all these other things where you connect the garage with a little porch kind of a thing. But I also think, in addition to the, to the risk of, of the accountability risk of not having the owner occupancy or having this as a rental unit, there's also the risk of the dimensional and the density and the increase in size that would be a consequence. And if you can also look at a series of restrictions in that department-
Yeah, so I think we should move on to that.
Which says that, which says that down the road, if you can't restrict that, or reality doesn't allow you to have it as a in-law forever, there are another series of ways of looking at it. Also, I think you could, and I like your idea of restricting it to no more than 5% of the non-seasonal buildings in the town, which is what the model bylaw says. I think the model bylaw, when I went back and it, it, as an aside, I think it's worth rereading that model bylaw, because they have a lot of restrictions in there that are excellent, that are geared towards the creation, the monitoring and controlling the creation of these things, so that it becomes a burden relative to either the density or the scale or the character of the neighborhood.
All right, so let's, okay.
So, I think if we, if we had the family context and we add the safeguards Jennifer has drafted, I, I think we're there. I think we could get there. My only, only question would be then, what about change of ownership of the property? How, how would we deal with that?
Right.
You mean what Jen was saying about, they have an, you mean the, what Jen's comment was, you have an in-law apartment, your grandmother's living there, grandmother passes away, what happens?
Right.
Well, the family requirement would still be hold, and she has safeguards, I'm talking about you sell the house.
Okay.
If you sell the house and somebody, if somebody comes in, what's going to prevent them from renting out the in-law?
Right. So, I had, to answer your question, as a possibility, I had drafted, you'll see on my third page, the two new items at the bottom that say, "Prior to the issuance of a special permit, the owner must send a notarized letter to the building commissioner certifying." So, that's the process in order to get the special permit. Then there's the owner recertifying. Mary had added, based on our conversation last time, or maybe this was already in there, C, just above there, that when a dwelling which has been issued a permit for an ADU is sold, the new owner, if they wish to continue to exercise the permit, must within 30 days of the sale, submit a notarized letter to the building commissioner, say that they will occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises as their primary residence. So, I don't know if we would want to require it to be family in one of these requirements, but I think that we can get there. If we want, if we still want it to be family all along, then that, we would, we could ask them to recertify each year that it's being used. I was proposing it as owner occupied, but, I don't know, I'm throwing it out there, that we could propose that they're recertifying every year that it's being used by family.
Well, I, I mean, I-
If that's the direction we're going, we could shift my proposed language.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's too restrictive. It, it also goes to the other, the other concern that I've had is, how does one monitor this? What's, what's the compliance strategy here? How do we, how do we set up a-
Well, I think it's the annual certification.
Yep.
So, yeah, that would act as like an affidavit.
Yeah, which, I talked to, Mary and I have had multiple conversations with Mike Clancy about enforcement, because I know a lot of people, and I know when I talk to people, too, they say, "What about enforcement? There's all these ones out there right now, no one's doing anything about them." First of all, I know we have a list now of the grandfathered, there are actually a fairly large number of grandfathered these units in town that the town knows about, and they're fine, they're grandfathered. But we talked to Mike, Mary, do you want to weigh in on the enforcement issue and sort of what, what we've talked through?
So, we checked in with the building official about how to receive some kind of annual certification, and if that's what the board would like, he can set that up, you know, when one of these is approved, right in the building permit software. He does like annual inspections for likes, other uses, like restaurants and things like that. So, he can just set up the software to generate annually a letter, and he generates the letters typically in November and December and sends them out. And the onus is on the property owner or the business owner to, you know, complete the form and send it back. And so, that's how, it wouldn't be a burden on staff to do some kind of annual affidavit, generate a letter, send something out and say, "Please complete this notarization and send it back." So, he thinks that's very doable. One concern the staff has expressed a few times is, we just would like to be sure that as we're out there enforcing this, right, that it's clear to us and it's not, you know, it can be sometimes difficult to enforce things, ask personal questions. So, I would just look to our lawyers to make sure that whatever parameters are here are very straightforward. We also did talk, I know, just jumping topics, but we've spoken a bit about some of the existing, but not grandfathered accessory units out there, and had a conversation with Mike Clancy about that. And we've gone back and forth talking about potentially amnesty provisions, or how do we handle that? Is there an interest, you know, or a way to incentivize, incentivize people that have these now to come in and apply for permits so that we can inspect them? The goal is to have these units be safe. And so, you know, he, he, his opinion today was that if the town ultimately chose to adopt a bylaw that permitted these, the people that had them now, for the most part, would probably be interested in coming in and, and getting them legalized, if they could.
Right. Well, and to that end, Mary, if you don't mind me jumping in, at the bottom of page two, I actually drafted a provision, and I'll read it to you, because it spans two pages, and I know your eyes are getting tired. "In order to encourage existing non-grandfathered accessory dwelling units to come into compliance with this zoning bylaw, the Board of Appeals may allow minor deviations from these requirements so long as the accessory dwelling unit, A, existed at the time of the adoption of this provision of the zoning bylaw, B, meets all life and safety requirements of the building code as determined by the building commissioner, and C, the owner applies for this special permit within six months of the adoption of this provision of the zoning bylaw." So, it would create a six-month period where the ZBA could make, allow for minor deviations for something that's been in place for a while, and it's safe and it's okay, but we, you know, they, they go in and they inspect it and it all, you know, comes up to snuff, and they would be making only, we would allow them to make minor deviations to allow this to happen. So, that's what I proposed.
Did you get this language from somewhere, or did you?
No.
I mean, right. I, my, no, I'm just, no, it's very, it's very, it's very nicely drafted. I will tell you that my experience in dealing with the zoning board and the zoning administrator is, this is very, this is problematic, because you're giving, you're basically allowing the zoning board through a special permit to give a variance, which is not, I mean, it's a variance. And, to the extent that someone's been doing something illegally, they're being given a leg up over someone who hasn't done it illegally and now has to come in, I, I, I'd be, I would just caution adding something, like if someone has one that's currently not legal, and they want to be able to sell it in the future and market it, that it has this unit, they're going to need to have it be legal at that point. And I think that's, Mary, what we heard, is that when they sell and a broker shows up, or for whatever reason, domestic or otherwise, the police become aware of a situation, or a neighbor is aware that there's a problem at a property and they're calling Town Hall, that's when these things will typically get vetted out. But, I, I mean, I, I just, I'm a little bit uncomfortable.
Is there any way, like, is it the minor deviations that, what troubles you, is the allowing minor deviations from these requirements?
Is it that you don't think an amnesty provision, so to speak, is needed?
I don't, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's needed. I mean, I, so if they come in within six months, they don't have to comply with the bylaw, but everybody who's not done anything illegal has to comply with the bylaw. And I think it's the combination of those two factors that will be, put the zoning board in an uncomfortable position, that it's not being applied, it's not being applied equitably, and in fact, it's giving a benefit to people who have operated illegally.
Can we just talk just a minute about-
Strike that.
About-
I mean, I'm just saying that, I think if people have an illegal one, they want it to be legal, they need to just come in and apply.
And fulfill the requirements.
And fulfill the requirements.
I like the intent that's expressed in Jennifer's narrative there, but what I'm concerned about is, and this has been a concern for a while, about, you know, let's talk a bit about variance provisions versus special permit. As I understand it, in a variance provision, the hardship of proof falls on the person applying for the variance. And so, and I look at this as from the neighbor's perspective and the abutter's perspective. If someone comes in and wants, if we want to have an amnesty provision, and amnesty provision supports life safety requirements, because then people, life safety folks, police and fire will know where these units are, who's in these units, not the specific people, but know the type of occupancy, and know where to go to access these units, amnesty, to me, makes really a lot of sense, because it's about life safety. On the other hand, if it's the issue here of variance versus special permit and who's protected, I like the idea of the amnesty, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the issuing a variance by special permit, because that's going on now. So, if an abutter has a problem with what's going on in an adjacent property relative to an ADU or illegal apartment, if the owner of that building comes in and wants to do a variance, the burden of proof is on the owner. If the abutter appeals it because it's egregious or there's something significantly wrong with the whole approach, that appeal is usually upheld.
But Gary, I think you're, I, I think what, it's true that very few variances are upheld, but I think that you're kind of misstating the distinction between a variance and a special permit. A variance has specific criteria under a statute that are extremely difficult to meet. And so, there are very few, and I can't even think of one right now, I can't, like, very few with any, because I can't think of any, in which someone is going to be able to meet the statutory criteria for a use variance to allow an accessory apartment. Now, perhaps, you can get someone who's dealing with an extremely disabled person who needs their own living, or, I don't know, maybe you can come up with some sort of hardship, but they also have to meet, it has to, it has to be, all those issues that are, go with dimensional requirements, such as lot shape, or topography, or soil, I mean, all of those have to be met. So, it's not what, it, you gotta, you kind of have to distinguish between the use, which I don't think Jen was trying to get to. Jen was trying to say, "Well, maybe the lot is 500 feet too small," right? Then, okay, maybe we'll let them have a little deviance, but really, then they need a lot-size variance, right? That's really what they're giving. So, that's kind of the, the, the difference between them, and that's the only reason why I, I think that it could be problematic for the zoning board in trying to implement and enforce this to include that kind of provision.
I think that's, that's good feedback. I mean, I, I think that's fair, and if, if the amnesty provision doesn't make sense, that's fine with me. I do think, Gary, that if you want to talk about whether an accessory dwelling unit should require a higher threshold, I mean, we've been, we have a special permit throughout, it's a special permit throughout, and it has been since the, in fact, I just looked back at the November 2014 draft from your committee. It was proposed as a special permit back then as well.
I understand.
So, that's not new. It doesn't need to be, and the amnesty provision can go.
My concern, I like the idea of the amnesty provision. Where I was going with this is, how do we not get into a situation where we're asking the zoning board to issue a variance by special permit? That's what I was trying to resolve.
Right, and I think if you don't include that language, that deviance language, then you avoid that concern.
And then it doesn't do anything anyway.
Right.
So, then it, so then it's useless.
So, then- Raising the bar on the special permit does give some of the protections you're talking about.
Yep.
If we have like family requirements. And I also think, Jennifer, that the 5% suggestion is excellent. That's a very creative way to control it.
Well, I got that, I'm sure from somewhere. It's from the, the state, the state is coming down with that, too.
Right, it's in that language, that, because, so, the, the Zoning Reform Act, which may or may not go anywhere, both versions of it, because they're making it mandatory as a right, I think as a kind of counterbalance, they've proposed that language, may limit the total number of accessory dwelling units to not, less than 5%. So, they're kind of saying, you can limit them, but you have to allow at least 5%.
Right.
So, um-
They're only having two requirements in S-81, the state proposal.
Right, right. So, can we, can I, can I just kind of make sure, because I'm trying to keep track, I know Mary is as well, for notes, for kind of cleaning up the draft, just starting, starting maybe again, which is, that threshold question of building in a reference, I wouldn't do it exactly the way Rockland did, but I mean-
I think the board wants to limit this to family. I think that's where I'm headed.
And it would be consistent with the definition of family in Hingham, which has enough play in it, recognized family relationship, which is brought with domestic help, which would allow an au pair, or some sort of live-in helper of whatever type, an elderly caretaker or someone, okay. So, can then we maybe go back to square one, section one, and try to-
The purpose.
Walk back, walk back through, just because-
Yes.
I just want to make sure that if Mary and I are trying to incorporate the changes, that we're clear on where they are.
Absolutely.
And, and I understand, like, Gary's language talks about family, et cetera, but as I, as I said, I don't, some of this language, and I know it was in the drafts from 2014, but it's in, but it's been, if it's going to stay in, even if it's like the two years or whatever, it doesn't belong in the purpose, it belongs somewhere else. So, I think that, you know, Jen, we started with 1A, Jen read that. I mean, you know, the question is, do you want in the purpose, um, something that, I don't know if you want to add into A, something that references the family, I don't know that you need it there, as long as you put the requirement in later.
I think it would work well in the eligibility requirement section.
Yes, I agree.
So, I think we can get to it there.
So, is everyone okay with A, the way Jen proposed it?
The only thing that I have is this, I wanted to add something, you know, about owners of single-family dwellings larger than required for their present needs, or something, so that it, again, that goes back to the owner occupancy and the family. something, um, so that it, again, that goes back to the owner occupancy and the family.
I will, I will tell you that in talking to staff, both Mary and Emily, because of the extremely liberal zoning bylaw in the town of Hangum with respect to Hatfield, all you're gonna have is people playing games with it. They'll come in, they'll put on a big addition, and then they'll come back later and do their dwelling unit. So, I don't know that with Hangum's very liberal, um, Hatfield language, um, someone that, I mean, I guess the question is, is someone gonna have to say, oh yeah, we're gonna only put in an accessory dwelling unit because our house is too big? I don't know. Someone may say, my grant, my mother is extremely ill, or I have a handicapped child, or a special needs child, who could live independently, but not 100% independently, quasi-independently, and so, I'm going to put a little addition, bump off the back, so that he or she can feel like they're living independently, but we're here. And if that's kind of going to the family need, then to say, it can only be in a house that the people feel like's already too big, then you're not accomplishing that goal.
I think that we have the dimensional requirements that we could talk about.
Yeah, we can address that in the dimension.
And you do talk about the burdens of homeownership in A, so?
Right.
You kind of refer to it in a sideways manner. I just want to reiterate what Susan Murphy said. It won't help anything to create a bylaw that's going to just cause people to get two permits instead of one to work around it.
Right.
It's gonna create, you know, just put roadblocks in front of people from doing what they want to do.
Right.
And it puts staff in the position of having to second guess the chain of permitting.
Could I ask you, Mary, for the benefit of newer members of the board, to review what the Hatfield amendment, amendment does?
The Hatfield amendment allows people to not create larger, and Susan, you can jump in if you need to, but create larger non-conforming, like extend further into the setbacks, but it does allow you to extend, you know, non-conforming, or expand existing non-conforming, um, walls. So, those are some of the houses that you see, that the massing just looks so huge. And, um, what we're, what we're thinking is, there was a provision, and I'm not sure if it's still in here, that said, the accessory dwelling unit can only be in the existing footprint of the existing house. And so, somebody may say that they're putting the dwelling unit there, but then they'll come in and just get an addition, and bump out the house somewhere else and say, well, that's not for the accessory dwelling unit, that's just an addition. You still have this huge massing. So, if the intent is to limit the dwelling unit to the existing footprint, so that you don't have a massing problem, that you're not changing the character of the neighborhood and having these really large structures, there's a workaround, right? And we're gonna sit.
I mean, that ship has sailed in Hangum. All you have to do is drive around Crow Point, where I live, and I will tell you that the size of the houses that are coming down, and the houses that are going up in their place, is more than double, sometimes three times the size. And that, but that ship has sailed, because Hatfield is Hatfield. There was an attempt, when I was on the planning board, and Bill, you were on the committee. Bill and I were on a committee together with before Bill.
David Power was on the committee.
Yeah, Mary Power, Victor, Victor was on the committee. And there was a warrant article to require those types of changes, to have a special permit A1, and it got crushed at town meeting.
Well, it didn't be crushed. We got a majority.
Did we get a majority?
We got a majority, but it required two-thirds.
I don't, it seemed pretty crushing to me.
Because we lost.
Because we lost.
We got a majority.
But, I mean, I think the fact of the matter is that people who live in the town of Hangum know that that is a property right that they have, and although they might not be happy sometimes with what their neighbors do, they're not going to give up the right for themselves. So, I, I mean, does that mean it could never change? No, but at this point, the neighborhoods are so disjointed that now what's in keeping with the neighborhood? I now live on a street where there's a little two-bedroom bungalow that had a, one two-bedroom bungalow next to it, but now has a massive four-bedroom house that's towering over it. And so, is that now the standard for the neighborhood? So, when the house next to me sells, the buyer of that house will do what the house next to it did. So, I'm just, what I'm saying is, I don't think, Gary, I think I'm just going to the point of, and I'm just, like, I, and I apologize to the extent that I'm moving a little bit outside of this is what a statute or a case says, but I'm just trying to provide a little bit of my historical perspective from being on the board for 11 years, of kind of knowing Bill was around for some of it as well, of kind of knowing how this has unfolded his, I'm giving some historical perspective on it.
So, I can't, now, now, the Hatfield references single-family houses on single-family lots. Now, this is a separate bylaw section that's talking about something that's a little bit different than that. So, why can't we put in some performance controls? For example, on page two, under B, why can't we put in some dimensional and area and size controls? So, in other words, and this is coming from Concord, um, and I figured that because Don Barosky was involved, it was pretty tight, um, being the preeminent land use person in the state. Um, they, in Concord, they basically say that the aggregate increase cannot exceed one-fifth of the gross area of the existing dwelling. Why can't we put something like that in there?
Because you have, you have to look at it in the context of the entire Concord zoning bylaw. Concord doesn't have anything like Hatfield, so you can't expand into setbacks the way you can in Hangum. Um, I believe it may have floor area ratio or other lot coverage type, but, like, you, you have to, when you're pulling bylaws, like example bylaws from other towns, you have to sometimes go back and look at it in the context of their entire bylaw, and how the different provisions play off of each other.
So, so why couldn't, I understand that. Why can't we put in something like a floor area ratio, or something like this, which is a size parameter?
All right, so I think it goes back to Mary's comment, is, what people will do is?
The two-step.
They will put on a big addition first, and then come back a year or two later and put in their accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
Or.
Or they're gonna have an in-law apartment because their house is too small.
Just, just the practical matter of it is.
It doesn't seem very equitable either, right?
Right.
If, if the board really wants to provide a vehicle for accessory units or in-law apartments, creating a bylaw that's so restrictive that it's going to compel anyone that wants to do it to have to take two permitting steps, or three permitting steps, is really the same thing as just not doing it at all. So, I mean, and then, and like I said, staff doesn't want to be in a position of trying to have to, you know, monitor, you know, why people are doing what they want. It's their single-family house, and if their lot isn't restricted by septic or by size, and they can do an addition, I would not want to be on the staff side of the fence saying, you can't, because that's not what the town wants.
It would lead to all of the kind of, for lack of a better word, deceptive plans that are being submitted to the building commissioner now, where it just looks like a plain old addition, and it looks fine, and it's got a nice doorway, the size of, you know, French doors, and the minute the billing, they've got their C of O, that gets closed up, and it's, now you have your illegal unit there. And that, and I'm telling you, since Mike Clancy's been here, how many times, he has said to me, Susan, I have to approve this, because it complies with zoning, but I know five minutes after I leave, it's gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna throw a, you know, a mini kitchen efficiency in there, and it's gonna be an apartment. So, what you're doing is, I guess I just wanted to sway the board from, as Mary said, putting in provisions that are so restrictive that they'll just lead to more of what you're trying to, you know, avoid happening in the future.
It's, it's like saying, we want to do it, but then really what you're doing demonstrates that you don't really want to do it.
Let's see it that way. I see it as, I see it as a balance, where, I mean, right now, we're saying that, we've already set, set a minimum size, or proposed a minimum size to con, to comply with the downtown overlay district of 550 or 575, whatever it is, and a maximum size of 900 square feet. We've already set a size parameter on this, which I don't think is overly restrictive. How can we work within what we have to meet a balance where it's not overly restrictive, but it also isn't wide open? You know, because to me, it's too prescriptive. It's just 900 square feet. It doesn't really, you know, for example, in the older houses, in the older neighborhoods, 900 square feet's gonna be a lot easier to put into a house and not really change the character of the house, which will have an incremental impact on the character of the neighborhood. But to put a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit into a house in Bradley Woods, Bradley Park, Liberty Pole, any one of the subdivisions in the town, it's gonna be huge.
Is it the smaller of 900 or 40%? Because there's no house in Bradley Woods.
Yeah, Bradley Woods is.
That 40% is 900 square feet.
It's whichever is less.
Yeah, I don't think the lots.
Whatever is less.
The Bradley Woods lots, I don't know what.
I mean, the house, I lived in Bradley Woods, the, the cookie cutter, well, they weren't cookie cutter, but they had the same floor plans, but different, different layouts on a slight site. That, those houses were no more than 1,200 square feet. So, the biggest accessory dwelling you could put on there would be?
400 feet.
Thank you. Right? So, um, you know, I think that, I, I, I don't know. It's up to, listen, it's, it's up to the board, what I'm, what, I think what Mary and I are both kind of saying in the same way is, I think the, you know, at a certain point, the board has to decide what you think can be workable, and then you have to put it in the hands of the zoning board and the building commissioner, and let them do their jobs.
Well, and just to be clear, um, even with the language that we have here in the draft, not every house in town is gonna be able to put one of them in.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say. Let's go through the, let's go through the eligibility requirements and the dimensional and design requirements, because I think that's going.
Can we finish?
Did we not finish purpose?
Yeah, so, we did. So, A, it sounded like we're done on A. B, the changes, do you mind if I just help moderate?
Go.
Um, okay. B, the changes, and I, I think it's a good clarification, to monitor accessory dwelling unit construction for code compliance.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, Gary had suggested, um, adding, providing housing for units for persons with disabilities.
Okay.
So, um, is that, I don't know, how does the board feel about that one?
Good.
I'm fine with that. I would, and I know you're not gonna like this deviation, but I would like to point out that I also drafted some language that you may have a problem with relating to this, even though I didn't put it in the purpose.
Clear.
At the bottom of page two.
But is it in purpose?
No. No, 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 I just want to talk about disabled, the disabled units, for one second, since we're on it. So, I just want to point out that under four, a dimensional and design requirement, I put in a new, "In order to encourage the creation of accessory dwelling units for disabled and handicapped individuals and persons with limited mobility, the Board of Appeals may allow reasonable deviation from these requirements where necessary to install features that facilitate access and mobility for disabled persons." So, while maybe we don't need to talk about that at this point, I wonder if you will look at that and say, mm, like you did on the, um, yeah, I'm curious.
No, but let's, let's, can we get, I think there's a way you can do that.
I agree, I agree.
But I would, I would word it a little differently. Um, I would word it a little differently, but I think, okay.
Can we rework that later?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to point out to Gary that I was thinking.
I would say, I.
No, and I, I like what you said. The other thing I wanted to just.
Were we still on purpose?
Yes.
Before, I just wanted to lay out a constraint. I can't go much longer, and I'm just wondering, we've got a lot more to cover here.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering, can we do a schedule another time? Because this is gonna go on for at least another hour or two, and I can't stay that long.
Okay, um.
And I would add, I like the intent of that. So, maybe.
I do, too. I like what you said there, too.
Okay, good. Um, can, can I ask a question then?
Yes.
Maybe that would help Mary and me to look at your suggestions and Gary's suggestions, and maybe just identify the, the.
Commonalities.
So, I think, I think, so, if we just go through bullet points, everyone, I think we're all set, it's in the primary dwelling only, right?
Yes, definitely.
So, it's primary dwelling, it's the si, the, um, size of the units, everyone, people seem.
Yeah.
Right? We've got, you want some sort of family-type restriction on it, um, you want, um, some sort of certification, annual certification?
Yep.
Upon, like, annual or upon sale, or re-permitting upon sale?
Well, not re-permitting, well.
Well, I was thinking about that. Could we do re-permitting upon sale?
Well, the thing is.
They should apply for a new permit.
I worked in a town where we did that, and I will tell you, um, what happened would be when the house was getting ready to sell, someone would come in and say, oh, great, is this a two-family? And I'd say, no, it's an in-law apartment, however, you have to come in and actually get a special permit from the board.
Well, I'll note that the special permit that will have to, will have this condition will be recorded and be on their title, so they will know.
They should, but here's, so, my point being that, um, we still did it, don't worry. And yet, we, people did not like it, they were not fans. However, sometimes that became problematic during the transaction with the sellers and the buyers, and of course, all the realtors, and, you know, it was seen as, um, challenging for the tight schedules of the process. Not the planning process, the home sale process. But we did it, and we were just like, I'm very sorry, you know, it was duly noted as public hearing, and we did it, and the new owners had to come in front of the board and stand up, and they had to provide their affidavit, and the board told them the rules. So, it is doable, but I will just tell you that we will be getting some complaints.
Do you, okay, do you, do you?
We want something.
Do you want an annual certification and upon sale?
I would like a re-permit upon sale.
Yeah.
Okay, and then when, when?
But like, you know, the.
You'll backstaff up when we get complaints.
But it's kind of like when you buy, when you buy a house in Hangum, and the realtor tells you, well, you know, you live in a historic district. And what does that mean? Well, it means if you want to do something in front of the house, you got to go to the.
Some people still don't understand that.
But what do we get? No, we get complaints about that.
Right, of course, but it's.
I, so I have another, I have another question. I know you, you were proposing to take out all kind of restrictions on who could live there, but then adding the 5% limit? If the family relationship is required, does the board feel like a limit on the number, or do you feel that if, if people can only do it for a family member, people, maybe not as many people would invest in the cost of do, I guess I just, I guess that's a question. I just think Mary and I need to know for redraft.
Well, I think that's a good point, because I think once we limit it to family, I'm less concerned about a lot of these other, um.
I actually, I, I, I'm not there yet. I, I still think we should have the 5%. I think we should walk before we run on any of this stuff. It shouldn't be wide open.
Mm-hmm.
This is, you know, it has potential to, so I would leave it in.
Gordon, the question is?
Sorry.
If you limit to family only, do you feel that a limit on the total number in the town is still needed? Gary said yes, Jen said maybe not, Bill said maybe not.
I think, I think you're gonna have way fewer of them if you limit to family, so.
Oh, I know.
I mean.
Way fewer, I don't know, I'm just, I'm most concerned about these, and I'm not resolved on how we do the appropriate balance of controls in the subdivision neighborhoods that were developed around the current zoning bylaw. The houses in this town that were developed before the bylaw, and in the ensuing development of the bylaw between 1941 and 1960 or so, '64, those houses are different, in, in a lot of respects in terms of this. And I just, I see it as a, a scale issue, and I see it as a neighborhood character issue.
And the 5% gets you, the 5% gets you there mostly? Like, would you mostly agree with what's in here if we have the 5%? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, I would do what's in here with the 5%, because I was proposing to add the 5% too, in mine, um, in my comments.
Mm-hmm.
I just think that we can say things that are subjective, like, it has to be a minimal intervention on a single-family house. It has to be, uh, consistent with the neighborhood character, you know, while protecting the stability, property values, residential character. But how does the building inspector enforce that? Because that's not quantitative.
I'm gonna.
And that's where I was kind of thinking we should have.
The 5%. I would just say what the other potential concern is, in addition to just making this a type of housing that's available, because like you said, people have said it would be good for my adult child, or my special needs child, or my parent, or whoever, what happens when you hit the 5% and the next person needs ones? Are you then back to where we are today, where the people who want or need one are just gonna create them and they're gonna be illegal? So, I, I, you know, again, I'm just cautioning on thinking about what the goals are. So I, I, you know, again, I'm just cautioning on thinking about what the goals are and whether or not, what, what are the counterbalancing goals? And Gary's kind of talking more about proliferation and concern on character of neighborhoods. The question is, do your design requirements saying it has to look like a single-family, that if there's a second door, it has to be on the side?
Right.
Are the other design criteria protecting, um, insulating against the concerns Gary has?
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's two, right? There's two different issues there. There's a, we don't want to do something that's going to encourage or lead people to do things illegally, but we want to maintain character and how do we, how do we counterbalance those two?
That's where I was coming, it, it's more than just the details. I mean, the door on one side is key, but to me, the massing and the size of the building is key relative to the neighborhood. And so I understand the Hatfield issue, but I think in turn, this is a special permit, and this is, it's not a by right, this is a special permit, so why can't we have these other conditions? And we don't have to grant these, although, you know, the special permit implies with conditions that they will be granted. I just think that there has to be something that, to me right now, it's more, it's, it's open, and, and that's a loophole.
I, I think the 5% is so far away. I mean, the reality of, what's our housing stock number approximately?
I didn't even look, I'm sorry.
Say it's, I don't know, even if it's only 10,000.
It's 10,000 residential units.
Then, I mean, we're talking about 500. We're, we have, if we put the 5% in now and if in five years-
Right, then we can amend it.
But every year, we have more units, so the 5% goes up.
But you get my point, that we could put the 5% in.
But 500's a big number.
It's a big number.
Yeah, okay, we'll put in, all right, so I just wanted to bounce around.
No, I think it's good to play it out. I think it is good to play it out.
Can I just make a, just a comment with regard to the massing, because I understand what Gary's saying, but I just would, would respectfully suggest that if we say, if you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, then we're going to place these controls on the additions that you could do on your house if you just didn't call it an accessory dwelling unit, then people are just going to do the additions on their house and not call it an accessory dwelling unit. So if we're controlling the massing for this, that we're not controlling it in the other portions of the bylaw, then we're just going to get building permits coming in, so-
Let me, let me add just one, one comment on that, Mary. The plan that's submitted, I also think we should also require that a plan be submitted as part of the special permit, because that plan is going to show the fact that in order to it to be an accessory dwelling unit, it has to have a separate bathroom and a separate kitchen.
Right, well, the plan, right, special permit-
It is, but I'm saying that someone can't come in and say, well, I'm going to get around it by just putting a larger addition on, because that larger addition is going to have to show those provisions of the kitchen and the bathroom and the plumbing and the electric.
The point is they modify it later.
Right, but the thing is-
I guess, but how do we do that?
Gary, they're doing it now. They're coming in with additions, they're putting in bathrooms, and then they have like a nice big open room or whatever it is, and then the minute they leave, they get their buddy, the contractor, who comes in and puts in the little kitchenette or whatever else. So it's already, people already know what the workarounds are. Um, okay, I just want to hit on a couple of other points. This, you know, a CFO with it, like, so a house, a CFO within the last two years, I think it goes, you had recommended taking it out.
Yeah, I-
I think, Mary, it goes to your point again of people are going to game the system.
And I'm not opposed to, if, if we go back to our purpose, I'm not opposed to a family that wants to come in and build a new house and have an in-law apartment for grandma. Like, I don't, that doesn't, I don't think that changes anything for me in terms of this bylaw. If they want to design their house that includes something for their adult child, especially now that we're limiting, if we're talking about limiting it to family, I don't think it needs, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, I think that, I'd have to think about it a bit, but I think that going into this, it was always an assumption, and even in the committee three years ago, that it was always a pre-existing dwelling that would file for this permit.
Yeah.
And so I had not really looked at, I'd have to think about that context, but, and also relative to the family.
Yeah, if it's limited to family, I think a lot of these other concerns of mine are mitigated so much by it being family.
And it's, it's easy.
Yeah, I, I agree too, because the intent of what we're trying to do is, that's the whole purpose of it.
Right, so if that's what they want.
It does get to-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, no.
No, I was just saying, and again, I don't want to relitigate it, but that, that does suggest that the family part be in the purpose, right? We were talking about kicking it down to the, to the requirements, but there's, there's something a little bit overt about leaving some reference in the house.
All right, well, look at the purpose, put the family-
I would agree.
-also in, add, also in purpose. So I think Mary and I can kind of propose some for you guys to think about.
Yeah.
Um, the other, the other, I, I think Jen, scanning your changes, a lot of them, I would put in more like the cleanup of things that are redundant or just not necessary.
And I tried to note that.
Because they're not consistent with the other.
I noted that where they were, yeah.
Um, but the other, the certificate, the automatic expiration you were talking about taking out in favor of the certification, the annual certifications.
Yes, I don't know if you guys agree with that. I think that's cleaner than expiring.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Because, you know, grandma was for a long time.
And based on what Mary said, it won't be, then it won't be heavy lift for the building.
They have to reapply if the house is sold.
Yeah, that's what we agreed on, yeah.
And let me, let me see what else was in here. We talked about that. Um, I'm sorry, I saw a couple, I thought I saw one or two other things, Jen, that you had called out.
No, that's good.
Rice letters fine and the recertification, we just talked about that.
I, I mean, I would think, I, I mean, do you think that I, oh, the other one was the, um, going from, or I don't know what was in there, the 10,000 versus the 5,000 so long as it complies with septic or sewer requirements.
Right, which it's, it's important to remember what an extreme limitation that is on so many parcels in town. I mean, having met with Sue Sarnie on this, um-
The sew, the septic is a, is a big limitation that will limit many of the homes in Hingham.
Many, many people will not be able to avail themselves of this.
Which is another reason why the 5% would probably never get it.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Well, I mean, because our sewer is so limited to so much as 10.
Right, right.
The one, the one point I had on, on that particular issue was is that right now, we have three different zoning districts, residential zoning districts. One, A is 20,000 square foot minimum, B is 30,000, and C is 40,000. Where I, and those were intentionally done in such a way to, to respect and acknowledge the different environmental densities and characteristics, natural characteristics of the areas of the town. And so what I was just suggesting is, is that, I understand why you suggested the 5,000, because it really relates more to properties in Residence District A where the lots are typically smaller. But I was trying to set up some language where the size of, the minimum size of the lot was more related to the residential district that the house was in. So I was saying, well, the house had to be, the minimum lot size had to be the minimum lot size required in the residential district, with the exception of if the lot size was smaller and it complied with an earlier zoning bylaw, then the lot size could be that smaller lot size. Instead of just saying across the board, 5,000 square feet.
Right, but Gary, but I think you get to the same place, because any 5,000 square foot lot that currently has a house on it is a grandfather, non, legal non-conforming grandfathered lot. If there's a house that's less than 20,000 square feet in Hingham that exists today, that means it's grandfathered and it could either pre, predated zoning or conform with zoning-
I understand that, but I was just, I was not comfortable with just having 5,000 square feet as the minimum across the board, because in Residence District C or, or B or C, which is 30,000 square feet or 40,000 square feet, there aren't any, or very few 5,000 square foot lots. But also, it sets up the, it sets up something, if you had a lot that was larger than that, you could potentially subdivide that lot with the intention-
You can't, they're two separate things.
They're two, two, because this does not allow anyone to do anything on a substandard, like create substandard-sized lots outside of the district.
I'm not saying create a substandard size, I'm saying create with the 5.
If, if you're in, if you're in Residence B right now and you're required, and you have a 30,000 square foot lot which is required, you're not going to be able to subdivide that lot. You could maybe put an addition on or modify your existing house to have an ADU, but you can't make that lot smaller than 30,000 square feet. Just would not allow that to happen.
And I think it would be extremely unfair to those, even if it's only a small number of lots in town that are 5,000 square foot in a minimum 30,000 area. I think it would be unfair to say that that family can't make an in-law apartment.
And that's why I, that's why I said that it was, if it was not legally non-conforming, meaning it complied to an earlier zoning bylaw, it was fine.
Right, well, I think that that's-
I think that's still-
That's inherent in the bylaw now. You're not allowing anyone to create a smaller lot for the purposes of doing this, but if they already have that size lot with an existing house, then they can do it. But not, they can create a lot just for that purpose.
I gotta, I have to go, so.
All right.
Are you going to create another draft to look at, or?
Yes, and let's talk about when we're going to continue this too, though.
Okay, let's do that.
Um, yes, fair, well, we can let you know, or you can, but I want to make sure you're available for the next time we can discuss this.
Good discussion tonight.
Yeah, that was good. I feel like we made some progress, yeah.
That's good.
Um, Mary, what do you think?
Um-
I always look to you for calendar. We have something on the 26th and the 28th already. The 28th, we're meant to go through time, place, and manner and definitions. Those are the two marijuana's that remain, is that?
That's correct. I mean, time, place, and manner, you only have a few sections left to go through, really, so I handed out to the boards some homework.
Which day are you talking about now?
Tonight.
Wednesday, the 28th of February.
You already have a meeting scheduled. I'd say put it there and-
See what we can do.
You don't have a meeting before then that you could put it on.
What are we talking about, the 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think maybe we-
The 26th.
Just do the-
The 26th, we have a meeting, but-
I think you're really close on the time, place, and manner.
Yeah, I think we're getting close on this.
I think you just need to talk about, well, the zoning districts is really the last.
Yep, 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 that's true.
So I handed out to the boards and advisory tonight, an envelope was stuffed for the 28th on time, place, and manner.
Okay, thank you.
And Susan has highlighted the things that when we left the last meeting, we said still needed to be looked at.
Gary, does the 28th work for you? I know we're already planning that night, but I want to make sure you're going to be here.
28, can we do, no way to do it on the 26th?
The 26th, you have, already have a very lengthy hearing. Hopefully, you'll be closing out the 29 Canterbury project that night.
Yeah.
No, no way.
Even if you can't-
I don't believe, that's very optimistic.
I like optimistic.
Even if you, Bill, even if you can't close it, you need to spend two or three hours on it.
That's fine.
Well, we're not the ones continuing it.
What do we, what do we have on this? I have one other thing on the 28th. What do we have on the 5th?
We already are discussing, we already have a meeting.
We already have a bylaws on it.
Marijuana.
We already have a meeting.
We already have a meeting.
Marijuana for the 28th.
Is the 28th.
So that's the next night we have for bylaws.
Okay. I guess that's going to have to be it.
Does the board want to vote to continue the-
Make a vote, should we, we continue the discussion on accessory dwelling units in the primary district until Wednesday, February 28th?
What I would ask is that we do it, can we do it first and not second, so it's not 10 o'clock?
And the time, place, and manner. You need to continue that too.
Can we do this one first?
Oh, yeah.
And time, place, and manner on recreational marijuana.
To February 28th.
If we do it on the 28th-
I'll second that motion.
Can we do it first, though? I can't stay late on the 28th.
Um, yeah.
If you do it, if you did it first, because I, I'm going to have to leave it on-
It's fine, yeah, absolutely.
8:30 on the 28th.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ready.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second, I can.
All in favor? Aye.
All right.